All right, with that, I'd like to call to order our, there we go, call to order our regular city council meeting for January the 11th, 2021 at 8:59 PM. We just got out of joint special meeting with our planning and zoning commission, so bear with us for being a little bit late in getting this, this regular meeting started. With that, we're going to move right into our invocation and pledge, our invocation by Councilmember Carbone and our pledges by Councilmember Hernandez.
If y'all would bow with me, dear Heavenly Father, thank you for another day. Thank you for all the blessings and freedoms we take, take for granted each and every day. Be with our first responders, be with everybody that's protecting us, both here and overseas. Help us to make wise and pleasing decisions tonight and be with this nation in a time of turmoil and help us all to come together and focus on you. In your name we pray, amen.
If you would, please join me in our pledge to the United States and then to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you for all of that. And with that, we'll move to item number three, which is roll call and certification of quorum. And all council members are present, either in person or online. So we do have a quorum present. Before we move on into the agenda, there's a couple of things. Number one, and I'll say this probably over the next several meetings, just so people can understand, this is our first regular meeting back in person. And so with that, we're still working out some, some bugs and kinks as we have both in person, folks here in person, as well as council in person, as well as those that are online. Several of our, most of our staff, in fact, are online, watching and listening in. We do have a couple of council members there. So we just ask for a little bit of grace as we, as we move through this and kind of get back to normal and whatever our new normal is right now. Also with that, I would beg the opportunity as, as the mayor to move a couple of new business items to the front. We have been totally disjointed because of moving our elections from May to November and then having runoffs. I'd like to move item, new business items, both one and two, to the front. New business item number one is electing our mayor pro temp. Item number two is actually adopting the, the protocols that we're operating under tonight. So I'd like to get that official as soon as possible before we, before we move on. So with that, and hearing any opposition to that, I'd like to ask Councilmember Owens, would you place new business item number one on the table?
Consideration possible action regarding the election of a mayor pro temp. I must move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. The protocol for a while now, a couple of decades has to, to the council member who's got the longest, I guess, longest standing tenure without being count, mayor pro temp, has been elected the mayor pro temp. I don't see right now a reason to change that and necessarily have a jockeying back and forth of council and, and, you know, potential of fracturing council. So, you know, with that, the, the council member that has, that fits that criteria is Councilmember Hernandez. So, you know, I, I don't have any issues with that. I'd throw it to council to make a motion in one direction or the other. What's your, what's your pleasure?
I'm supportive of the, of the action as written to elect Member Hernandez as mayor pro temp.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comment or question? I see the guys online not moving that direction either. So, so with, Councilmember Kamkar, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I was, I was, thumbs up, second.
All right, just, this new normal, just trying to get it. It's all good. So with that, so the election of Councilmember Hernandez as mayor pro temp. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Perez? Member Owens?
I've got one question.
We're past discussions.
Do I, if, if I vote no, do I have to give back that box of candy? No, yes, that he'll make a good pro temp.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Epstein.
Member Little?
Yeah, I'd just like to say it's been a great honor to serve as a mayor pro temp. I got an extended reign because of COVID. Actually got to service a mayor for a few weeks when Mayor Reed was in the hospital. But thank you very much and wish Adrian the best of luck and I'll be an aye.
Motion carries six to one.
Six to one or six to zero.
Abstention, one exception.
One abstain, yeah. I got you, I got you. All right. So with that, we'll move to item number two, and this is our adopting our interim health and safety protocols for council meetings. Councilmember Perez, would you place that on the table?
Happy to do so, Mayor. Item was that again? Item number? Consideration possible action number R2021-11, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. With that, a quick staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you've noted a couple of times, this is a new way forward for us, and we're trying to do this in the best possible manner to maintain a safe environment for both council, the public, and the staff. And so we've consulted with our own expert staff and others and looked around for examples. And as you've also mentioned, these are subject to revisions that are going forward, but the JPH, I think, was a good start. These protocols were developed as a, an extra layer of safety as we go forward in these times to maintain public meetings here in the chambers and also the virtual option, both for the council and the public. And so these lay those out. So they're clear for everybody and anybody knowing, wanting to participate, they can understand that going into this. So nothing to add, sir.
All right, good staff report. With that, any council, do you have any questions or comments?
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to, I guess, for the people who are attending and for the people that are watching, just for this to be on the record so that people know the order in which we will recognize speakers in the future. It will be those who have signed up to speak virtually first, followed by those who have signed up to speak in person second, and then anybody who has not signed up at that point wishing to speak will be third. And we may have an exception to that rule this evening, but generally moving forward, that will be the order. Thank you.
Yeah, that's just a little house cleaning item on, you know, we still want people to, to sign up virtually. Still want people to attend virtually. The, the chamber itself is set up with limited seating. We still want you to be able to address council and do so virtually as well. So this is truly, and I can honestly see, you know, even post COVID, I could, I could see some hybrid of this even moving forward, just to, again, to get more public involved. Don't necessarily have to make the trip to City Hall to, to make that happen. So I appreciate staff's efforts to, to get this in place. One of the first questions they asked me when I came on board was about in-person meetings. And so I made the decision, let's finish the year 2020 out with, with virtual, but with 2021, let's, let's move in this direction. And so I appreciate their efforts. I appreciate everyone with the due diligence that they've done for maximum safety and all the protocols with CDC guidelines and those types of things in, in place. And at the same time, it gets us back doing the business here in chamber as opposed to online for the most part. And I, I think moving forward, it will help us hopefully establish, you know, the norms back again. And so a little bit getting used to with the, with the petitions and those types of things and, and all that. The new normal will, will set in pretty quickly. So with that, any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none in that direction. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R2021-11.
All right. So with that, we'll move back to item number four, which is citizens' comments. So with that, Mayor Pro Temp Hernandez, would you take that?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we do have six individuals who have asked to speak. And we do have former Representative Pete Olson of our congressional district. Thank you so much for being here this evening. We would like to invite you to speak first. Please state your name and address. And we are very thankful for you and your patience this evening.
Good evening. Name is Pete Olson. I'm from West Pearland, also known as Sugar Land, Texas. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak this evening. Congratulations, Mayor Cole, on your victory. Congratulations, Councilman Camar, on your victory. Congratulations, Councilman Owens on reelection. It's nice to see Councilman Carbone, Orlando, Hernandez, now the mayor pro temp, Little, and Perez. Yes, I've got retired before last Wednesday. I have no agenda, except to give my sincere deepest appreciation to the town of Pearland through their city council. You've allowed me to be your voice and vote in Washington DC for 12 years now. Y'all gave me the one weapon I had to have in DC to make things happen for Pearland, and that is the facts. Best example, Hurricane Harvey. A record amount of money came out in six months for that hurricane, almost $160 billion coming to America after Harvey. The first so-called charge was only $40 billion. The second one was just above $30 billion. Last one, our Speaker Paul Ryan, he talked about the big spending bill that happened at the end of that year. He didn't mention Hurricane Harvey. I went up to microphones like this to ask the Speaker, what about Harvey? But y'all put the fear of God in our Speaker Paul Ryan. Well, I could say a word. He said, Pete, calm down. Your home state is the biggest share of that $80 billion. That's all because of Pearland, Texas. You also gave me the vision through Commissioner Perez to realize you have a problem here with hurricane recovery. You only have high wheeled vehicles, your fire trucks. There's a program that allows the federal government to give you surplus DOD equipment, big trucks for rescues. Their program had been wiped out by the previous administration. I got that back into law this year before I left Congress. That's all because of Pearland, Texas. It took us 50 years, but finally Clear Creek is being fixed. That's because of Pearland, Texas. We had some great times. Our league baseball team was the third best team in the world in 2015. First time they went to World Series in Pennsylvania, Councilman Orlando played on that team. Guess what he did? I hope he does it for council in the future. He grooved to the worm. All funky. Last thing for Pearland before I left office is something I'm very proud of. I retired on the 3rd of this month. On the 5th, news after that, President Trump signed by bill, named our post office in West Pearland after Mayor Tom Reed. That is now law of the land, and that is happening. One final comment about how I love Pearland, I know I'm over my time. This town showed how a dead man can win a Texas football championship. Our, our elders ran a great play called the Dead Man a Trick Play, scored a touchdown, and beat the number one team in America with a Texas State 5A title. I'm leaving Congress to spend some time with my family. I appreciate the kind words y'all have said about my tenure in Congress. But quite frankly, they're kind of doubters. Miss you, Pete. You've been a good congressman. Hope to see you around. It sounds like you think I'm dying. I can assure you, I am not going to die leaving Congress. In fact, I'm leaving Congress, that makes me free to help out Pearland in ways I couldn't help out before. For example, I can now ask for money for charities, private sector money that I couldn't ask for before as a member of Congress. And this is the best thing. We love this town. If some yahoos from Houston come down here and badmouth Pearland, I can say to them, shut your mouth now. Don't disparage Pearland, Texas. I'll conclude very briefly by saying, thank you, thank you, thank you to Pearland. Y'all have given me the best ride in my entire life in your congressman for 12 years. God bless you. I love you, and I am not dying.
Thank you, Pete. We appreciate your dedicated service to the Pearland and West Pearland as well. So thank you, and please enjoy retirement. We know you're not going to go anywhere. Also, great, great time. Okay, Mayor, next, it's gonna be a tough act to follow. But next on our speaker list, we have, I believe this person is on the, the phone, Mr. Jeff Hunckley. Josh, can you see if Mr. Hunckley is on the line?
Hello, yes, I am. Jeff Hunckley, 3912, Oakwood Drive, North Pearland, Texas, 77581. Last year, I suggested many times, starting the year, was setting goals for the budget as well as the city manager. With how last year began and progressed, I think it's more important now, more than ever, to do so. It was also, almost a year ago, we learned about the water debacle that has affected most of Pearland. I request this to be at the top of the city manager's goal for 2021. I have listened to explanation, apologies, and requests for transparency, and here we are, after a year, still dealing with it. And frankly, I find this ridiculous. I have attended most of the city council meetings and hear contracts being awarded for thousands and sometimes millions of dollars. If any of these contractors perform the way the city has, it would never be awarded another contract. So why are we treating this any different? A single decision was made to change the reading cycle with no oversight in place, no follow-up, and no checkpoints, and how did the city respond? We had to pay for Olson and Olson to analyze the situation, and it resulted in two retirements and no one held accountable. Then citizens complained when our water bills increased and continue to do so today. Then the city had to pay Raftellus $98,000 to tell the city how to do their job. And who paid for all this? We, the taxpayers. I was hoping to be on the ad hoc water committee that was created, but I guess my request wasn't accepted. Having a career in computers and software development, I was hoping to share some suggestions, but I will have to state them here instead. When programs are used to monitor systems, validations can be put in place to alert users when certain thresholds are met. These weren't in place now, then, but I suggest they get put in place now. Ever since the 3230 plan was put into place, have individual accounts been identified and monitored? I would select groups of accounts that categorize different areas and compare their usage moving forward. Compare history to current usage to track trends and address problem areas until all accounts are verified. I would select the top 10 to 15 accounts whose usage increased the most when the new meters were put into place. I personally know mine has doubled. I would also select 10 to 15 people who decided to switch meter sizes and track their changes. Also, select citizens from each of the four water areas and monitor them during the beginning of this year to allow the committee to study these trends. For transparency, I suggest displaying all of this data on the city website to let people For transparency, I suggest displaying all of this data on the city website to let people see if their situation falls into one of these areas. If we are still discussing water issues in August, then senior management needs to be held accountable, and we citizens demand leadership change to who can resolve these issues. We are beginning a new year, and it's a great time to start fresh and give citizens a reason to believe we are on a better path to 2020. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hunckley. Mayor, next, we have Ms. Valerie Lee. Can you confirm that she's online?
I have one calling user that I haven't been able to identify yet. I do not see her name on here, so let me see if this is, if this calling user is here. Give me just one second. Calling user with a phone number that starts with 832-605. Will you please identify yourself? Calling user 832-605, your phone, your microphone is unmuted. Can you identify yourself, please? Okay, it doesn't look like Valerie is here.
Okay, if she comes back on, if you would just let us know, and we'll continue forward. Next, Mayor, we have here in the chambers, Ms. Carol Buchek from the Pearland Chamber of Commerce. If you could, Carol, please state your name and address. Let me hear your comments in three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Happy, happy 2021. Great things are going to happen this year. I'm looking forward to continually working with you as we move forward in our community. I'm Carol Arts Buchek. I'm president and CEO of the Pearland Chamber of Commerce, 6117 Broadway, Pearland, Texas, 77581. And I want to thank each of you for your leadership for our community. The Pearland Chamber has been building business leaders and communities since 1963. The pandemic is not our first disaster we've been through, nor this election, the first election we've ever been through. So as a community, I am proud of us. I'm proud for our tenacity and for our continued success as a city. My concern is regarding Agenda Number Five, that states, "Consideration and Possible Action Creation and Appointment of a Customer Input Ad Hoc Advisory Committee to provide the city council additional input regarding utility billing process and system review being completed by the Raff Tellis Consulting Group." My concern is, in looking at this group that's listed, they're just individuals with no explanation of why they were chosen to serve on this committee. And, which I think it's a great idea, it's just that there's no rhyme or reason of the individuals listed of why they're on here. If it's a customer creation advisory, are these people customers? Or are they just residents that live here, don't own property, or don't pay a water bill? I don't know. I would, I gave each of you some questions I have. My concern is that I don't see any one of our 68 target industries that we're, that the chamber is supposed to service for business retention and expansion. I don't see a corporate, high-level taxpayer that I can identify that's on the committee, nor a healthcare provider or hospital representative. Now, they may be on the committee, but I don't know, because I don't recognize their names. That's my concern. I leave it to you as a council to consider. If it is a customer advisory committee, then I would like to see business representation on there. If it's a citizen residential committee, I'd like to understand why that they were chosen, the process they were approved upon, and then, of course, the goals that they are supposed to submit within six months. With that, I thank you again for your leadership. I know you have a lot of business issues, city issues, and family issues, so I pray God's protection over each one of you.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate your comments, and thank you and everyone else who's here tonight for your patience. Mayor, moving forward, we have next a Mr. Marvin Kernan, who, he signed up for in-person, but I do not see anyone here. Mr. Kernan, if you are hiding under one of the seats, okay? Then we will move forward. Our next speaker, which is Mr. Jimmy Davis. Mr. Jimmy Davis, if you would please state your name and address. Let me hear your comments in three minutes.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combs No Street, Pearland, Texas. First, I'd like to say, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, in the words of our great Mayor Reed, as he used to say, "It is great to see your bright and shiny faces." Gentlemen, the Raff Tellis report, when you look on page 29, they make an option-one recommendation, how do we move forward? Drop our unbilled reads. That's a, that's a recommendation that I support. I looked online at our financials, the 2019 CAFR, the most, most recent one available. Water sewer revenue was $59.8 million. Expense to provide the service was $39.4 million. Seems that we made $20 million. Raff Tellis has said, "We have about $5 million unbilled consumption," which seems about right. I looked at the way they came to the numbers. It makes sense, and that's in line with what I was expecting. They point out that it's an actuarial loss. It's not money out of our pockets. But yes, it's an actual, actuarial loss. It's revenue that we right now have on the books that we wouldn't receive. We'd see a reduction in, in revenues. But I point out, there's lost revenue that I think we can make up. Gentlemen, y'all got an email, but just this weekend, at the end of my cul-de-sac, a neighbor that moved in about a year ago was loading their U-Haul truck. They're moving out. They're renting another house. It's what they do every year. They move from one house to the next, finding the cheapest place for rent. Well, they live there a year. Well, I looked at cycle 12, and guess what? Their final bill, they've lived there a year, they've gotten 12 months of water sewer and trash service. They will receive 10 bills. They'll pay for 10 months of trash. They'll pay for 10 months of sewer. They'll pay for 10 months of water. And guess what? Every resident, since about January 1, 2019, who's moved in since then and have moved out, they've gotten free services. Now, when the water billing debacle started, it was suggesting there is an emissions insurance claim, and we were told, no! You can't do that, because it's not money that we lost. It's just money we haven't billed. Well, guess what? I'm calling on y'all to look into all the people that have moved out for two years, identify how many months they lived here, how many bills they paid, quantify the number of months of free services they got, and file an errors and omissions claim. Because guess what? That is money lost. You can't go to somebody that moved out a year and go, a year ago, and say, yo, me two more months of bills. You can't. So that is money lost that is due the enterprise fund, and that can help cover some of the actuarial loss.
Mr. Davis.
Following the recommendation on page 29. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mayor, that concludes our speakers for this evening.
Moving forward in our agenda, we'll move to item number five, which is our consent agenda. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda, items A through C? Nope. No, we're not gonna, we're gonna move forward quickly. Councilmember Carbone, would you place consent agenda on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through C, so moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All this noise going on back here, reverberates around here. Sorry about that. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote? Items A through C?
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion to approve consent items A through C, it, the motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Moving on to new business, we've done items one and two, so we'll move to item, new business, item number three. Councilmember Little, would you place that on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2021-8. No move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Moving to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item three is a resolution to formally adopt our Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. Council, recall that in December, we presented this and shared the document, and we did get a number of questions from council and clarifications. We did answer those in the memo that's attached. But this is an important guiding document for the city in terms of directing our resources, our strategies, our planning, and our future capital improvement program. And so this has been vetted and run through not only the Parks Advisory Board, but other community groups. And I believe it's a solid document that'll help us a lot in trying to settle through a lot of competing priorities and options as we go forward. So asking for your formal consideration for this resolution tonight. An answer.
Okay, that's, thank you for the staff report there. Moving to council questions and comments. Making sure I can see Orlando and Cam Carr as well.
I've got a couple of questions. You know, going through it and looking at it, I've been getting some calls, or actually some, some emails, on a couple of things. And one being the picnic tables and barbecue areas and people wanting, you know, we had those in the park before it was redone and improved, but we don't have those now. And so, you know, I guess it's probably in the future, I guess. I don't know. I've not heard anything on it. The other side, I got a question. I know that, you know, along the Clear Creek, we're looking at putting tenant, or 10-foot wide walks through there. And, and actually, it's for equipment going there to DD4 flood control or whatever to do work on. So it's actually, you know, that's pretty expensive. I mean, that's one lane of road, really, going through there. So I was wondering, on some of the other trails that's not on the creek side, can we continue to use the granite, crushed granite on the trails? I know we have in some places, and I think, you know, those, those hold up good within areas of, of, it's just gonna be walking. So I was hoping we'd take a look at that and utilize more of that in there and in our parks plan. But certainly, I think, you know, we should look at coming back in the parks and with the barbecue grills and the picnic tables. That's the only thing I've got.
I don't know if you want to be the answer, Mayor, but this is a Parks Master Plan that guides, you know, future investments for not only programming, but capital investments. The questions operationally that were asked in December, those are covered. You have a memo on the packet on page seven of 653 that talks about the granite-style trails. And I think there's other questions in there that were talked about. So if there's any questions, after you have a chance to review that, we can follow further with you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from council?
I'd just like to thank staff for putting this together. I appreciate the, the two major items that I requested. Kind of getting better connectivity from our cycling community and potentially looking at adding Wi-Fi access to the parks. I think those would be two necessary and beneficial items to include in this plan, you know. Certainly, too soon to see if that's affordable or adoptable, but, you know, if we get an idea of what, what the effort would take for us to add Wi-Fi throughout our parks, give people opportunity, we're working from home, probably permanently, to go out and, you know, get a break from staring inside their walls. I think that would add a lot of value to the community, again, if it's, if it's affordable. Again, thank you for the effort.
I don't really have any comments about Parks Master Plan. I already said what my comments were last time we reviewed this. Mine is more of just a general comment about the actual memo. I love that y'all have the previous memos marked on here. If we could hyperlink those, too, that would make life amazing. That's all. Thank you.
Comment, yeah, especially if you can review. Any other comments or questions? I don't see guys online moving in that direction either. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-8.
All right, thank you. Moving forward in the agenda, item number four. Mayor Pro Tem Hernandez, would you place that on the, on the table?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2021-9, so moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second, three of them, so pick, take your pick. All right, with that staff report.
Mr. President, you want to take any credit or blame for this one?
Sure, I can take all the blame. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is our, every two years, we adopt a state legislative agenda, and we largely base it on ongoing issues from, from prior years. Base those on broad categories and then support those, or call out how those are supported by our strategic priorities. From the draft that you originally saw, we did add three items that are notated in the AIR, based on feedback on the draft. And of course, we use this, moving forward, we'll send this to our state legislators. We'll use this in any communications to support our positions as we work through the legislative session and share this as a, use this as a communication tool. In past years, we've always worked with the Chamber of Commerce on their legislative agenda as well, so that they're compatible. They go in one packet that we used on Pearland Days in Austin. And depending on how that turns out this year, whether we go to Austin or whether it's done more virtually, we'll, we'll do that again with the chamber.
Thank you for the staff report. Any council questions or comments? Seeing nobody moving in that direction, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-9.
All right, moving forward in the agenda, item, new business, item number five. Councilmember Perez, would you place that on the table?
Consideration and Possible Action, with the number, consideration and possible action creation amendment, an appointment of a customer input ad hoc advisory committee to provide the council additional input regarding utility billing process and system review being completed by Raff Tellis Consulting Group, so moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. From a staff report standpoint, I guess I'll give it, since this was really an idea I brought forward. And, and so I'll, I'll, I'll give a quick dissertation on how we got here. So one of my ideas around the whole water billing issues that we're facing as a city is to make sure that we're engaging the citizens themselves as part of our effort to do two things. One, let's find the ultimate fixes so we can repair it. But number two, just the repair of trust and building trust back with the citizens and, and getting the citizens' input in that. So we, at the last council meeting in December, whatever the date was, December 14th, had, it wasn't a decision, it was just a topic of discussion. And, and the topic of discussion led the council to ask myself, two other council members, and that was Carbone and- And that was Carbone and Perez to, to sit back and come forward with a slate of folks that we, to add or make up this committee. In addition to that, Councilmember Hernandez had also thought about seeking, you know, some applications and some input from people out there as well. He called me after the meeting and asked if it was okay to put that out there into the public to seek input and people who wanted to be a part of it. Said certainly do so. And in fact, I think that came back with about seventeen or so people. He turned around and then asked some more in-depth questions of those people and that automatically whittled that down to about eight or nine. Cut it in half somewhere in that ballpark. And we did review those names at the same time. The three of us met and reviewed several names. I know the Carol in the chamber left a minute ago, but we, we have placed a former chair of the chamber, the immediate past chair of the chamber on the committee in order to represent the Chamber of Commerce, represent business and those types of things. We didn't look at individual industries. We didn't look at individual, like hospital or healthcare. We, we, we looked at this as if we've got systemic issues. It's an issue from whether you're a homeowner paying a bill or a business paying a bill. You've, you've, you've got issues in the system. And so fixing those issues or not, or the issues are not just with homeowners or just with businesses. It's, it's across the, across the enterprise where we've got some issues. So, but we did look at people. We, we didn't put, we listed names, but we didn't necessarily put their experience next to that. We talked about that one way or the other. Regardless of which way we went, we were probably going to have criticism on how we did that. I can go through and, and talk about each individual person and what we feel they bring to the table and why we ultimately selected them for this. The, the committee ended up being eight individuals that we're appointing. It's a little bigger than we wanted, but we also wanted to make sure that we did touch base like with chamber and business and those types of things. And so the, the, the committee grew a little bit as a result of that. Secondly, we, we did have a proposed scope. This scope isn't simply around the Raftellus report, even though the bulk of, of what they will be looking to do involves the Raftellus report. You know, as, as I put it, and I put it to staff and others, it's one thing to be in a box. You know, you can be in a little matchbox or you can be inside a shoebox. And so, you know, the committee is going to be looking and operating in more of a shoebox than a, a small matchbox and, and putting those, those limits on them. Outside of the, of the Raftellus report, we wanted them to look at any additional recommendations, you know, around utility billing, systems, processes and infrastructure, infrastructure, also the meters. One thing that the Raftellus report really didn't dive into was the actual infrastructure around utility billing. So wanted to make sure that, that this group had the opportunity to dive into that. Also in here, we've had some questions and I'll just state it as far as a six-month term. We, we put a term on here to, to show definitely that it's an ad hoc group. Ad hoc means it's temporary. But we, you know, we, we decided we better give people, if we're going to ask them to serve on a committee, some kind of a time commitment and what that would look like. We're not looking for, I'm certainly not looking for this group to take six months to do their work and come back with a full-blown recommendation. And we're just stymied for six months waiting for them. But at the same time, I want to make sure that each one of these committee members have kind of an expectation level of what to look at. From a meeting standpoint, we did talk about at least, you know, no less than once a month, the committee can meet more often than that if they, if they choose. Certainly there's going to be times that they will, may want to do that. We had some discussions around voting and when we do know, we've got an eight-member group, which is an even number, which, you know, typically you want an odd number. But in this particular case, we specifically said, what if we had a four-four vote on something of the committee as a recommendation? My look at that is they have failed. You need to have consensus moving forward with the group. And in fact, we had outside of this, just kind of discussions back and forth on an affirmative vote of six members of the committee versus a simple majority of five to three. I still believe six is, is needed and the reason is this committee needs to reach consensus. If, if this committee of citizens has consensus, then it's a better chance that our greater citizenry would have a consensus around what the issues are and what the, and what the fixes or the solutions are. So at the end of the day, this is a group that would bring recommendations to the council. Their recommendations are not binding. They are an advisory group. We, we have that in the title. It's an advisory committee. Ultimately, what happens is, is for the city council to decide what those recommendations, if they're going to move forward or not. But certainly what seems to have been missing, you know, from the last year, and we had a speaker, you know, addressing it, is, is just really the, the citizens themselves having a seat at the table with, with, with recommendations and part of the solution. So I'm sure there's more questions than I've just covered, but that's kind of the report of how and where we got here. The members that were chosen most bring some form of expertise to the table. One of the things that I wanted was people who had either some experience in utility billing or in utilities per se. Certainly, as I call it, flow, whether it's flow of water or flow of electricity or flow of gas or flow of something. You know, something is, is made, something flows to a customer, a customer gets a meter, that meter is read and that meter or that customer's ultimately billed and there's a process in doing that. Most of these members have that type of experience to draw on. We do have a couple of members of this committee that have been vocally critical of our system. And I believe that if this committee is going to have credibility and credibility to the, to the greater public, then some of our critics need to be a part of that committee in order to lend, number one, their voice. But number two, once there's solutions made, they are a part of the solutions moving forward. And therefore they're, they're a part of our team moving, moving forward. We can, we can agree to disagree on issues and not be disagreeable, but still be professional in how we do this. But ultimately, I think everyone on this list would, would, would want to, you know, fix the issues that, that we've got. I will state, we have one member on here who, quite frankly, she kind of just brings the average, everyday citizens to her. That's Jennifer Sheffield, I'll call her by name. She's in here. Doesn't necessarily have water billing or utility billing expertise, but we have a great number of people in our city that don't have the issues. They don't wake up and have a exploding water bill on a, on a monthly basis. They, they have kind of a normal bill and she kind of fits that mode. Well, one of the things that I want to make sure that we're doing moving forward, when we go to fix it, air quotes, all intentional, intentional. Let's make sure that we fix it, but don't overfix it and all of a sudden we have other problems. And so part of that is making sure that, that every citizen, whether they have a problem or not, is on board with, with what, where, how we move forward. By way of managing, I will be a liaison to this committee, hopefully to give some guidance as well as what we are recommending as appointed as a committee chair, Steve Sabo. For those that know Steve, Steve's a former council member, understands business, understands. He gets called into businesses to help look from top to bottom of their businesses and understand what the issues are. And then ultimately repositioning those businesses for success. And so at the end of the day, that's exactly what utility billing is. It's a business within the city. It's got its own set of issues and we're asking this group to come in and help diagnose along with Raftellus as, as well as our staff, the issues and then ultimately recommend solutions. Let me just state this. We've talked about it from the, from these two council members and myself's standpoint. We, we don't want them to take six months on all of their recommendations and then come forward. That would be crazy for us to sit here for six months and can't do anything moving forward. At the same time, we have them for a reason and we want to hear from them. Raftellus report specifically, we want to sit this group hopefully tonight. Raftellus is coming in for a presentation in two weeks. It gives this committee the opportunity to be on board and ready and hear that presentation and be a part of it. They can be up to speed by reading the, the report. I know there's several of these members that have already read the report. So I want them up to speed and ready to go so they can hit the ground running. At the same time, if you read the report, there are any number of twelve or thirteen of the sixteen recommendations that are really kind of no brainers. There's no, nobody disagrees with them. The city's already kind of in process. We certainly want to make sure that the citizens are on board with that, but if they come into their first meeting and say, yeah, there's these twelve or thirteen, we need to be moving forward. I would expect that as a recommendation early on and the, and the council can move forward with those, with those items. I would also ask as, again, as the liaison for this group, that the thirty-two thirty plan specifically, since that's mentioned in the report, there's multiple options given by Raftellus. That is a, that is an item that I would want this committee to dive into quickly and be their first main item that, that they could render recommendation on. Why? Because that needs to be looked at quickly. If we're going to change it, we need to get on with it. If we're going to keep it, we need to know that. That has budget implications up and down the line. And next month, we're starting, you know, early budget, you know, talks. So by way of, of managing, that's kind of how I see managing this group. And again, the expectation level from the group's standpoint is they're, they're bringing recommendations. Ultimately, the council either is going to accept those or reject them or modify them or, you know, have some, have some dialogue back and forth. And, and I would hope that, that even in that case, that we would have some dialogue back and forth, especially on something that we might not agree with as far as the, the group is concerned. So with that, that's my report. I'll kick it over to the council, but the other two council members that were part of this group as well, let y'all speak to it.
Yeah, Mayor, I think that this is a good approach to that and, and that report to have it reviewed. And, you know, this is a two-pronged deal. One, just get this satisfied. But I think as important is to build that trust back with the community. And so, you know, I think the slate of people that, that's on here are the ones in the community here that, that I think, you know, as residents, that's who we build. I know that, you know, some of us says, well, we should have got people from the hospital and things of that nature. And, and, you know, that, that's one way to look at it. But I think, you know, what we're trying to do is not only do that and get this thing taken care of one way or the other, but also to build that trust back. And I think that's, that's the people that can help do this.
It's the attempt. What you two guys want to rein, rein in on, Tony?
I mean, you did a good summary. There was a lot of discussion behind the scenes that I think hit on a lot of the issues that I've heard questions from today. Now, I mean, this is kind of what, what we agreed on, what we presented. So I look forward to the other councils' input.
Yeah, I would second that. There was some lengthy discussion about the members, the size, the scope between the three of us. You know, I, I think what we're presenting is what we think is a fair representation to what we as a, as a commission, we're, we're in charge of determining and presenting to council. So I feel comfortable with how we're moving forward. You know, I'm, as I've come to say, let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Certainly there's, with anything we do, there's always room for criticism, but I think this puts us in the path for which was initiated when council asked for this ad hoc committee, which is yet a slate of representatives that can provide us input. We've met that. I believe we firmly met that goal. I admire the, the chamber very, very much. I appreciate their input. Certainly there's no way for us to have equal representation to everybody who could potentially be affected by this. So, but we did, as, as the mayor stated, we did keep them in mind by electing their chair and making sure that they had a voice. Hopefully that, that satisfies that concern. And again, you know, people who've been critical, people who are neophytes to the issue, people who deal with this water billing on a regular, regular basis, I think it's a good, a good group. So I appreciate the, the summary, Mayor, and hopefully we can, we can adopt this and move forward.
With that, I'll throw it to the rest of the council.
Mayor, I just wanted to touch on Carol's, that she gave us, at least two, if not three. One of the things I guess wasn't addressed yet of the members on this list, I do believe are business owners as well. So we do have some business owners on this list, so that's good. Going back to a previous ad hoc committee that we had, we had the, a development code ad hoc committee that we had some time ago. And one of the things I thought was an interesting feature of that, that was an in-person meeting, but we did discuss and allow any member of the community to attend those meetings. And we did, in fact, have some members of the committee who are not members of that committee attend. So I just wanted to make sure that we did have the ability for if these are going to be virtual meetings or whatever, members of the community can still tune in, not necessarily participate, but are able to see what's being discussed. And then that way, if they feel so compelled, they can contact us directly with their input on, on what's being discussed in that committee. So that's one of the things I just wanted to make sure. I didn't see that listed anywhere here, but I think that was an important feature of the previous ad hoc committee we had and just wanted to make sure that that was a feature of this one as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Let me, let me state here, I guess, I, I, I think having access to the meetings is one thing, whether that's, you know, the, this is an advisory committee, very similar to the Charter Review Commission, which is also an advisory commission or advisory committee, but doesn't necessarily meet under the Open Meetings Act. Okay, having said that, doesn't mean that we necessarily hide their meetings. I think we can publicize their meetings and when they meet and where they meet and those types of things. As far as virtual and, and in person, that's something that is, is going to be part of what the committee needs to decide, how comfortable are they in person? If they're in person, quite frankly, some of, some of where they can meet is, is going to be limited only because we want to make sure of, of the space they're in is, you know, socially, you know, distanced and those types of things. And we can control that. We can't necessarily control that if they're in buildings or aren't ours. Secondly, they may have the need to, to talk to Raftellus as a consultant, for example. Well, Raftellus isn't here, so we're going to have to have IT and those types of things. And if they're in places that aren't our buildings, we can't control the IT as best as we can if they're part of our buildings. And so whether it's in City Hall or I think we have some space in the annex that's like training room size, that's large enough that we can have socially distanced. The, the PD building, the Public Safety Building has a large training room that you can socially distance in there and still have, you know, that type of interaction online as well as, as in person. So part of that's going to have to be a little bit of a work in progress, but I, I would envision if somebody wanted to tune in or be a part of their meeting. I, I don't see a problem, you know, restricting, you know, public from being able to see them from that per se, that particular action. But also all of their work product is certainly open to the, to the, to the records. You know, any recommendations and what they're doing will be, will be a part of it. And so I'll turn that to Darren. I know that's a, ultimately that's a legal, legal question on how, you know, whether it's a, you know, I, I know we can have their meetings like posted and those types of things, but under the act itself, you know, you got to have the seventy-two hour requirements. What if they decided they wanted to meet the next day just to wrap things up? They would have to go through the same, you know, Open Meetings Act that we would with seventy-two hour notice provisions and those types of things.
Right, as you stated earlier, the Texas Open Meetings Act does not apply to advisory committees. That being said, nothing does prevent the council from imposing that on any committee that meets, that you create and on their meetings. That being said, doing so could have the indirect impact of basically creating more difficulties in their meetings. For instance, like you just said, if they decide, let's say they're working- For instance, like you just said, if they decide, and let's say they're working through the 3230 plan and they say, hey, there's a lot, we, we want to keep this momentum, let's try to meet tomorrow. Well, if they're required to meet with the Open Meetings Act, they're going to have to wait and they can't do that for 72 hours. So.
City Attorney, this is Alex Kamkar. The, the question I have, I, I think is, we're possibly discussing items around taxation where we may have an open meetings item because you're doing the budget. Wouldn't it be reasonable for us to subject these people to the Open Meetings Act just for the fact that the recommendations are around items that normally would have some level of open meetings and, and posting and notification? I, I'm uncomfortable just knowing that three members of the council put together a slate and I honestly don't know three quarters of those people. Most of the citizens probably have no idea who these people are. So wouldn't it be reasonable to at least put that on the table, that these people should be subject to an Open Meetings Act?
And, and that, I mean, that's going to be up to the council to decide tonight if, if that's what y'all want to do as a body. I'm just bringing, I just wanted to make sure I raised the points that what could create, unintentionally could create some issues for them.
Yeah, just, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kam, just looking at the pros and cons of the two. And I, I think your, I think your concerns are, and your comments are 100% valid. And it's something that's.
May I make the motion then that these, this committee be subject to the Open Meetings Act?
Okay, what I was going to suggest is right now, I think we, we went directly in to just a sort of a staff report. In this case, it was the mayor's report. And so there's not a technically officially a motion on the table yet to appoint the slate of the committee or adopt their.
Councilmember Perez put it on the table for.
I, I did present it as a motion and it was seconded.
And that was seconded, okay, so that's on there. So then the, the next, that would be a proper motion to, if you wanted to do that, that would be a motion to amend. I was going to say also, if, if that is a motion being made, another way to approach that, which is more of a hybrid approach, is to not necessarily impose the same requirements of the Texas Public, Texas Open Meetings Act, but to require that they be posted for the public so that they are aware of it, whether it be on the city's website. Also, it can be posted in other manners, so the public is aware. And if they want to observe and participate, and in that context, they could, but without having, without having some of the other constraints.
City Attorney, I, I, I think all your comments are valid and organization's important. But when we're talking about making recommendations for bills that go to citizens, I think transparency is of, of the utmost. I think the, that this should be something that people have time to get a, get a hold of this, know that it's out there. And I think, I think 72 hours is very reasonable, considering what we're asking them to do. So I'd like to make that motion and look for a second on that.
And so based upon Councilmember Kamkar's, what I believe is a motion would, would require a second. And I believe that's a, a motion to include that in the creation of this committee, they be required to comply with the requirements of the Texas Public, excuse me, Open Meetings Act. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, before maybe we entertain the second, perhaps maybe we can have the other council members see if there's any other amendments that they would like to make to, to the slate or the scope. And then we can present one, one motion or one potential amendment to cover everything that the council may.
Rather than four possible amendments. Councilmember Kamkar, are you, are you comfortable with that?
No, sir.
I don't have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We needed a second before we could do anything. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Excuse me, we have an amendment and a second on the table to include the Texas Open Meetings Act requirement into, I would just put it into the scope of the, of the group itself.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Would that include the same way we do our PNC meetings or PDC meetings of having recorded?
I was going to ask the same question.
Yeah.
Yes, so it would have to be a, if we're going to completely require with the act, then yes, you would record the meetings. And then of course, they would have to generate some minutes for the meeting. It, it does create additional requirements. Now, you could, that could be modified to simply say that one to require with the notice requirements to, of the Public Information Act. That would be different, then you would be adopting a limited scope of the Public Information Act.
Right, now, I think, I think I'm comfortable with the video component is what I have the opportunity to and, and understand, you know, I mean, we've gotten minutes for, for things before, but I, I think this is a really critical issue and there's going to be a, a lot of insights to unpack.
And if I could also, so this would also, I'm assuming, force them to post a very specific agenda, correct? Where they would have to post items that are specific, where they would discuss at the meeting and not have open-ended kind of.
That is correct. You could only discuss what is on the posted agenda.
Okay, so, so that could theoretically could limit the ability to have free-form conversation amongst committee members. If they're, if they're to talk about only one specific item, as we would have to generate an agenda, allow them to speak only on that agenda item, and then essentially have them on a, a schedule for the entire six months of exactly what, what they're going to discuss and when they're going to discuss it in order to meet, be able to meet the, the total provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, correct?
Of the Open Meetings Act, that is, that is correct. You do have to provide the, provide in advance, 72 hours in advance, a, an agenda specifically identifying the, the topics that will be discussed and if any action is to be taken.
I think it could be, sorry, go on Darren.
Oh, and then also the, the time, place, location.
But could you clarify Darren? Could the, could the scope of discussion be as broad as, you know, for example, our agenda item tonight, our final item is council input and discussion on Pearland's economic outlook for 2021. So could the item not be as broad as Pearland's water billing and all affiliated issues with meters, et cetera? I mean, I, I don't, I think it could be phrased in a way, as I've seen many times for our items, that isn't overly constructive.
I do believe that the agenda can be posted in such a way that it, it provides some level of flexibility. They're going to be ultimately, the only, the primary limitation to the committee when they meet will ultimately be the scope that has been adopted by the council.
Yeah, and, and I think, and I think the agenda could simply, every agenda that they have could simply have the scope on it. You know, the input and discussion, and here's the scope of what we're discussing. Because I, what I don't want to do, I want to make sure that, that the committee does have some leeway to, to talk about things that aren't necessarily in the, in the Raff Tellus report. For example, I've, I've, I've mentioned meters. The Raff Tellus report really doesn't go in depth with meters. Well, what if one of these folks has a question about it and it, it actually triggers, you know, a solution that's out there? So I, I want to make sure that at the same time, it's all about the scope of water billing, you know, and infrastructure and those types of things. So I, I think, and, and again, I think we can, we can do this subject to the act. We just have to make sure that the individual agenda items have enough leeway in it so they can actually have some free form. And, and quite frankly, some of the early meetings should, should just have.
Open discussion.
Open discussion type items, which, which would allow for that.
I think you're going to have to do that, Mayor, that, that, you know, you, you can't really put an agenda together till you have time to read your report and then develop, you know, some kind of agenda item on it. And I, I hope we don't get to the point that you have to have a quorum of these people in here before they can have a meeting. And, and I think, you know, they, actually, if you got eight people, you know, they could meet here in the council chambers and divide space down there and here.
Got eight seats? I guess one other, one other question. I mean, structurally, if we, if we adopt such guidelines, since ultimately this committee is not adopting anything that's legally binding, it's only a recommendation. Does that allow more freedom to be flexible with any kind of agenda if it's open meeting? Say, look, we're just, the agenda item is basically paraphrasing, we're discussing water billing.
I think the, the agenda that's going to be posted, I mean, it's, I mean, even within the scope, you've sort of identified sort of what they're going to be discussing from week to week or month to month. So I, I don't think that that's going to be problematic is, is on this, and the scope, again, the scope is going to be the controlling document at the end about what they're going to discuss. So that's, that's not problematic at all.
Okay, so on the table, we have a, we have an amendment and we have a second to that amendment to add the Texas Open Meetings Act requirements to the, to the scope for this subcommittee. I'm paraphrasing what was just said. I think Darren's got the, the, the language better on that. So we have the motion and a second. Do we have other questions on the amendment and the second?
I guess one other maybe follow-up question. Could we, is there a subsequent modifier where we just say, look, it's open to the public, but it doesn't necessarily require a posted agenda? Just we say 72 hours, we're going to let you know when the date is and we, we could post a, a schedule as soon as they meet for the first time for the remainder of the date.
And that's sort of when I said there's sort of a, a hybrid, or if you want to call it a compromise approach, that would be that approach, that not necessarily required to comply with the Texas Open Meetings Act and all elements of that. But if you wanted to require that they received adequate notice, then that would be an option. You could do that, build that into your motion as well.
You know, on merit, so a second thought, I'm not going to try and amend the amendment, so we'll just let it go.
We've already made it more complicated needs to be, let's just, let's just vote on the amendment and see where it takes us.
No, but I mean, the, the way we adopt it, if, if two or three members can't make it and they need to push the meeting by a day, they can't. And I don't think that's our intent is to handcuff them from a timing. I think it's all about transparency. So to me, if, the, the most transparent is a, a video recording. And if this is going to be virtual meetings, then record them and throw it on the, the water billing website. But I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant, knowing how much time legal spends in open meeting request now anyway. Is this, what's our true intent here? And are we solving it by throwing out the Open Meeting Act? Or, or if, if the intent is a recording, then let's, let's do a recording. I mean, I don't think anybody cares if we post 24 hours or 72 hours or six months in advance. I don't really care when they meet. I want to know that that meeting's open and I can hear and see what they talked about. And I think that's kind of the, the, the hybrid method. Because I just don't know that, what, what do we solve by just throwing open meetings act on, on another governmental body?
I think Member Carbone, I think it's a fair point. Maybe we, we deal with the, the full provisions of the Open Meetings Act. If that fails as an adopted amendment, then perhaps we can discuss a subsequent amendment that, that kind of adopts a hybrid. So, you know, if, if we're not going full board, then maybe we don't just say, we're not doing anything and we can, we can discuss that on those merits. And I'm happy to make or present a, a subsequent amendment.
Before that, Councilmember Kamkar, you had a, you had a comment to that.
Well, I, I, I think Member Carbone has, has a point. I, I just, at the end of the day, most of the people have no idea who these committee members are. And at least a 72-hour notice period and a location lets you know, and putting it on video at least lets you see what is happening. I honestly don't know most of these people. And, and the fact that the president of the Chamber of Commerce doesn't seem to know these people gives me pause. So I would, I would feel better if we had a traditional Open Meetings Act meeting for this board, considering that they will be asked to recommend items that are direct taxations on the residents and the businesses of the city.
I, I support kind of a hybrid approach. Make it subject to the notice requirements of Open Meetings Act and not set it so strictly that they're no longer an ad hoc committee. You're specifically setting forth the agenda and they have to follow that and it has to be recorded. I mean, have to have minutes. Just make notice of the meeting, 72 hours is fine. I don't care if it's 72, like Councilman Carbone said, 72 or 24, just let the public know and give them opportunity to go on and, and view it while it's live or view a, a video of it later, as, as long as we have the transparency. So I would support that type of approach.
Yeah, I, I, I'm with, I'm real little on that. I think a hybrid model is where you go. Also, I would, maybe as we move forward with this thinking about the restrictions we're putting instead of the six, because I'm just thinking, if we do have issues with attendance, maybe we amend it to say just three quarters of the members present in the meetings. Is that way we're not having to force them to constantly?
Well, I think, let's, before we get into those details, let's vote on the amendment first. Let's see where we are with that. If, if we, if we adopt that, then that solves a lot, that answers a lot of the questions we have. So let me just call the question and let's get that amendment voted.
Question's been called on it, but that's a good, that's a good question. What we're voting on is the present amendment is that we've had an amendment and a second to abide, this committee would abide by the Texas Open Meetings Act. Is that correct, Darren?
That is correct.
If, if we do that, are we going to have to have an attorney sit in these meetings to make sure?
No, and that would not necessarily be a requirement that the attorney be there. That's not a requirement of the Texas.
We're going to make it so strict. I mean, do we have to have attorneys sit in there to make sure that to do it?
Mark Smith will be there.
Vote on that. Let's, let's go, request the call for the question. Let's go ahead and vote on it and move on.
We've, we've called for the question, so let's vote on the amended or the amendment to this. Madam Secretary, do you have the amendment? Are you ready to call for the vote on the, this is the amended, the amendment that we're adding to it?
So from what I hear from the council, this item would be to include an amendment to post the meeting notices as required by the Texas Open Meetings Act?
I think more generally just to impose the Open Meetings Act.
Abide by the.
But it's Kamkar's motion, so if you would like to.
Clarify.
I, I think the city attorney has it correct, that this, this committee would be subject to the Open Meetings Act.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little?
No.
Member Perez?
No.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
The motion fails two to five.
We had a, an amendment motion fail, so we're back to the item as presented on the table.
And here is to what I'd offer to Member Carbone. I'd offer an amendment that we record the meetings and make the meetings subject to the public within agreeable time period. I think that's the only, that's the only provision I want to offer. I'll, I'll, I'll ask if any other members want to request any other amendments.
I would support that.
I, I think being more specific, as far as saying 72-hour notice would be more appropriate.
Seventy, we can offer the recordings to be available for public view within 72 hours of the meeting.
I make a motion, we amend the original motion to.
You got a second, I, I got the motion, so if you, if you.
What was your specific motion?
With that we make the, we record the meetings and that they are available within 72 hours post the meeting to the public.
Second.
I thought there's a notice period on that also.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Seems like we're conflating 72 hours. Is that when the video has to be posted after or when you have to know in advance of the meeting?
Yeah, I think to Member Carbone's concern, which I share, is I, I do not want to post a 72, I do want to require them to be on a 72-hour notice because if we want them to meet at their freedom, which is as a had-ah committee, we're asking for volunteers. If we want them to meet at their freedom, I want them to be able to say, I can't make it on Thursday and everybody meet on Friday and be able to do that without it blowing up the entire month, so.
I think you said an agreeable time, so would an agreeable time be 24 hours?
I said 72 and it was seconded, so let's, let's keep it simple.
You were talking about the posting.
I do think it could be posted in advance. Maybe it doesn't have to be 72 hours, but it should be posted in advance and it should be.
I, I would agree with that. I think it, the agenda should be posted in advance to give people the opportunity.
That's what Member Hernandez said, that's what Member Little said. It, it seems likely Member Kamkar would be a minimal to that, so.
So then I will further amend my motion to say that, that they, that we be publicly posted when they are meeting within 24 hours of their meeting.
Aaron, is that the way we do it? Where we, we withdraw the motion and then offer up a clean motion? Because we technically have to vote, correct?
Because he made the motion, if, the, it could be a motion to withdraw or, or if there are no objections from the council, he can go ahead and, and amend the pending motion.
Yeah, let's.
If there are no objections.
All right, so the, so the all-inclusive amendment.
Yeah, if you'd like me to read, that we, the, the meetings be recorded, that those recordings be available within 72 hours of the meeting, that the meeting times be, times and locations be posted within 24 hours of the meeting, okay?
I would also like to add to, just to make it specific, that we do post these. I would also like to add to, just to make it specific that we do post these on the water billing page, specifically saying that the, everything will be located in one spot. So if we can just clarify that.
Which page?
The one that we currently have, we're posting the Raftellus report, all of the.
City.
The cities page?
Yes.
Okay. So amended, Member, Member Little, would you please approve it with your second since you seconded originally?
I second the amended motion of the amended motion.
It's good.
Feel like a pretzel. Don't you? Yeah, so we have an amended motion and a second. That amended motion is to, and I'll, I'll restate it, I think I've got it here.
Can I get one clarifying question? When you say recorded, I want to make, clarify, are you referring to audio, video? I mean, audio or?
Audio and video.
Audio. Audio.
What just occurred?
I'm specifying audio recording, not video recording. I don't want Steve to have to put on makeup.
Well, if they're presenting, you know, charts or visuals, I think that may be relevant. Is it that much more difficult?
That's a fair comment.
Do they have to be posted 24 hours for the meet or can they come in on and post it on, on Friday and they're going to meet, you know, the next week on a certain?
I tell you what, we've got a motion and a second. Again, I'm going to call the question so we can get in discussion. Let's vote on that. If, if y'all, if y'all want to further amend it, we can go from there.
So the amended motion is 24 hours notice, advanced, advanced notice of the meeting, time and place, 72 hour recording available for the public to, to, to hear at a minimum. Why don't we just, at a minimum, it's, it's audio. If we have video, we can do that as well, the way I look at it. And then third, is that the third piece? That was it? Recording, three, yeah, okay. And that would be on the, on the water billing website for the city. And we have a second to that. Any other questions or comments on the amended motion? Seeing or hearing none? Good, all right. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to include an item for the meetings to be recorded and provided to the public 72 hour, within 72 hours post meeting and also to publish notice of the meeting within 24 hours on the city's water billing website. Correct?
The amendment, the amendment to the motion, so we still have the motion on the table.
Yeah, so we have an amended motion now on the table. Any other questions or comments?
What is this motion that we're, we're discussing now?
It's, it's now the, the, it's the overall motion with the amendment we just passed to be approved. We've approved the amendment, now we have to pass the overall motion.
So, and just to sort of recap where we've gone, we, just to make sure everybody's clear, the original motion was to appoint the, the ad hoc committee, the slate of names in addition to their scope and which I think also includes the, which included in they are the, the chair of that committee is being Mr. Sabo. And then, once that, then that was, there was a motion to amend that, that motion failed, there was a subsequent motion to amend. That is the motion that was just voted on and approved. So now we need to vote on the original motion as amended.
Which is the committee and its scope and the scope, just, we just amended the scope to include what we just approved that amendment for. I believe, Mr. Kamkar has a question.
Yeah, is this for the overall?
Yes.
Committee or is this just on the Open Meetings Act at this point? I apologize if I'm not there in person.
This is item number five on the agenda.
Okay, I'd like to make a, a motion.
Amendment.
To amend the term on the, on this, to, I'd like to make a motion to amend by striking out the following words under the term, quote, unless the term is extended by the approval of the city council.
I'm kind of in favor of us continuing discussion to make one motion to amend. If there are going to be additional amendments, I'd like to have the discussion for.
The, the mayor made an excellent point, which is we have to make decisions prior to budgeting. And I think we really need to put some finite guardrails on timing. And if we're trying to execute this going into the budget cycle, there has to be a minimal amount of time, probably 30 or 60 days prior to the first reading. And so I just don't see where we're going to have the need to extend this if we're trying to get this into the 20, 21 CAFER.
With, with that being said, are there any other amendments that you or any other member would like to offer as part of a package? That, that seems to be the style that I has preferred in my opinion, just knowing that this is your first meeting.
I, I haven't figured all of that out yet. It kind of depends on how we, how we approach the scope on this.
Let's just entertain that motion or that amendment on its merits, I think.
So we have an, we have, we have an amendment to strike on the committee membership and term, basically the last, from the last comma to the end, unless the term is extended by approval of city council.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think we've heard a second yet.
We have not gotten a second on that.
I, I would say, I mean, Darren, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, it's kind of at the approval of council regardless, correct?
That would be correct.
Why can't we go back and either approve or disapprove number five for the ad hoc committee?
That's what we're doing.
And then at some point in time, do the other follow up as you need to do it later on.
We, we want to get, we want to get this done tonight in one deal and, and, and we're, we're there. So do we have a, do we have a second to the latest amendment?
Yeah, I'm finally seconding that and discussing it. I, I think this needs to be, this needs to be done in six months if not earlier, previously said, so it's not, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion, excuse me, we have an amended motion and a second to strike in the committee membership and term unless the term is extended by approval of the city council. So with that, and, and I'll, I'll state, yeah, I would, I would certainly want their work done before six months. I think this was simply put in there in the event we got up to six months and they needed to go an additional month for something for some other reason. It, it gives the council the leeway to keep them on another month or so if they needed to.
I agree. I think it adds unnecessary rigidity.
I maintain the right to extend it regardless.
Right, oh, if we have, if we adopt a motion, say it terms in six months from whatever date that we choose, then we would have to reappoint.
That's true, we can vote yes or no, and then we decide that it's terminated, then we say, oh, we want to do the same committee again.
I think it's just setting the expectation and what's the baseline. I mean, we can always do what we want to do.
Right, yeah, I think setting the expectation is important for sure, I'm just.
No, deadlines have a way of motivating people and, and I think as it being a business owner, I, I need the deadline. And I just, if we intend to get this into changing for the budget cycle coming up and for planning, we need to have the time for the staff to analyze what is the impact on the enterprise system. If we decide to go away from 3230, just having that hanging out there just lets us know we can just keep kicking this can down the road. I think the citizens of Pearland are tired of dealing with this and we need to, we need to get those recommendations and move.
I think we have enough to vote on.
We have, so we have a motion and a second on the, on the table. Is there any other questions about the amended motion? The amended motion is striking in the term scope and meetings, in the term, striking the last portion of the term unless, in quotes, unless the term is extended by approval of the city council, close quote. That's what we're striking from the membership and term.
I understand it.
All right, just, just making sure everybody's had an opportunity to see that. I don't see any other questions or comments on that. So Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on the amended motion, on the amendment.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
No.
Member Perez?
No.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one to strike in the committee and term section, the phrase unless the term is extended by approval of the city council.
Okay, we, so we now have a, an amended, we, we still have an amended motion on the table. We have the first amendment, now we have the second amendment. I'm not going to go back through those because I'll get it wrong on the table. But any other comments or questions?
I, I just wanted to revisit one thing that we talked about in the committee as to whether we want to require this to be a five member or six member. Forgive me, I think we had, we had discussed making it a six member approval. Do we feel like we need to put that within the scope as it was originally written or are we comfortable with the language?
You know, I, I think, and again, if somebody is, and Darren and I have subsequently had, as we were writing this, you know, do we want to do, you know, two thirds majority vote or three fourths majority vote? Is it the people there voting and present or is it, you know, in, in, in totality? Obviously, if you want to have six and you only have six there because two members are absent, then you got to have a unanimous vote of the committee coming out. If, if you didn't do that, then you would have to have still five. If you went like with a three fourths majority, you'd have to have five members to do that. Mayor Tim Hernandez, I got to get used to saying that, you know, mentioned three fourths as opposed to having, you know, just six in there. And again, you know, what I want to see coming out of it is, is true consensus, not just a simple majority, you know, coming out, but consensus of the group, which, which might delay some of their votes and some of their comments. I mean, they, they may have to work another meeting or so to get, to make sure that they have true consensus. So I, I'm open either way. Again, for me, I want to make sure that this committee has true consensus, not just, you know, a simple majority to pass what they're doing.
I think that's right, Mayor Cole. I think the way it's written, it's set up to have that consensus and when the recommendations don't kind of.
Yeah.
Mayor, Mayor Cole, can you elaborate on item number four and what that means? I guess I'm uncertain with that last modifier that may not be captured in the Raftellus report. Is this a Raftellus report issue or is this about the water billing system? Because I, I guess I'm unclear with the size of scope under number four. Number ones, two and three are very definitive.
So, so the Raftellus, you know, certainly I think did a fairly deep dive and, and thorough job of looking at our billing systems and our processes. They didn't really look at our infrastructure. And I'm not saying necessarily they, they needed to go in and look at our water lines and our sewer lines, but part of infrastructure is the meter. The actual meter itself is part of infrastructure and not just process and not just billing systems, but it's part of the actual infrastructure. So what I want to do is, is make sure, this is in here to make sure that outside of the Raftellus report, they have some latitude to talk about anything that's related to utility billing, systems, processes and infrastructure that may not have been captured in the Raftellus report. So it gives the, it gives the committee an opportunity to put on the table something that might not have been even discussed by Raftellus. We, we think Raftellus was, how do we know that they captured everything? So we, I don't, it, it's not a rabbit trail to go outside of utility billing. This is all within utility billing, all within systems, all within processes and all within the infrastructure of utility billing, not necessarily getting off into staff or, you know, those types of things, but just anything that, it, it, it opens the door for something outside of Raftellus and, and I'm okay with that, but it's still within utility billing.
Mayor, in the interest of time, let me go ahead and just maybe request, we call the question on the overall agenda item and I think, I think we've discussed it nauseam. I'm comfortable with the language as written, but maybe, maybe it's time we just vote on its merits and, and then move on.
Darren, is calling for the question, is that debatable?
It, it, one, no, it is not debatable and it requires a super majority.
We're calling for the question, so super majority with seven is six?
We could just informally just, rather than calling the question, maybe just informally vote. Unless, unless we need to feel like we need to vote on it.
Are we, are we going to be caterpillaring this items? Because I, I think the mayor pointed out that there are some items that need to come earlier than others. And I guess I'm a completionist and maybe that makes me an idiot, but if we caterpillar something out in March and then we have three more meetings, one in June and, and July or wherever it is, how do we know that we're not continually to shake the, the snow globe a little bit? And I guess, I'm just trying to understand, I didn't come up with the committee, and so I'm trying to understand before I vote on it with people I don't know, what, what we're trying to achieve here. Because if I'm remembering correctly, we voted on 3230 and we're only, we're 25% of the way in. And how do we know that seven people vote 7-0 to say we want to get rid of this 3230 plan and we've only, we've only cooked the turkey for one hour? And now we've got to go put something else for Thanksgiving dinner? I just, I'm, I don't know if they're, are they providing a report or are they voting on things? And I guess I'm unclear on that.
Are they providing, say that again?
Are they providing a report or are they voting on the Raftellus report? I guess I'm unclear on what, if we're, if we're expecting them to produce something in March or February or something near term, and then we're expecting them in June or July or at the end of the six months to provide more recommendations? And I guess I'm unclear how those all stitch together.
So in, in the scope, it says, it says, complete a review and analysis of the Raftellus report. Check. So that's all about the Raftellus report. In the Raftellus report, it has 16 recommendations. Number two, number two, let me finish, let me finish. Number two, complete and review and analysis of staff response to the Raftellus report. So did the citizens group agree? Do they agree with the staff response to it? Number three, provide formal recommendations to the council regarding each recommendation contained in the Raftellus report. So there were 16 recommendations and they are going to provide a recommendation on those 16 recommendations. And then in addition to that, if they have any additional recommendations to the council, they have the opportunity to do that. And so I want to also reiterate what's been said, these are recommendations. And so if, if they choose as a group, we want to abandon 3230 and we're going to pick option whichever, it's a recommendation to the council. That doesn't mean that we take their recommendation. Obviously, we have to listen to it, we need to take it under advisement. The ultimate decision is going to be the council to accept or reject or modify what they do as a, as a recommendation.
So from a timing perspective, they can make a recommendation three weeks from now and then keep recommending through six, six weeks, six months, sorry.
Potentially, yes. And so as, as the mayor and the liaison to this group, my expectation level, setting that expectation level to, to the group early on, because there are, for example, 3230 has a, a, a larger budget implication than whether or not they're redoing the, the standard operating procedure manual. So one has a, a major budget implication, the other is more on the process and the, and the, and the policy side of SOP. So I'm going to want, well, and let me back up. There are, I think it's 12, I may, I may get the number wrong, I think there's 12 of the recommendations that staff either agrees with or has no opinion on. Okay, which leaves four that staff may disagree with, right? It's either four or three that staff doesn't, doesn't necessarily agree with. I would hope, and my expectation level is let's take the ones that, I call them the no brainers, that everybody agrees on, all of that, let's, let's push those out, but then the major budget implication item is 3230. I'm, I'm going to ask this group to dig in and wrestle with 3230 on the front end of what they're doing. Because I don't want us holding for months and months and months on 3230. And I agree with you that if we wait six months on 3230, we're halfway through or we're, you know, a third of the way through with, with 3230 and we need to be, you know, that, that becomes another issue in and of itself. that, that becomes another issue in and of itself. So we have an amended motion. We have two amendments that we have approved. We have an amended motion that's on the table. We voted on those amendments, so now we're at the, I'm calling for, I'm not going to call for the question, I'm just going to call for the vote on amended motion.
Just to clarify, the question was asked, if, if we had gone there and we were voting on a call for the question, it, it's not debatable. It does require a second, which officially, technically, we haven't received it this time. And, and third, it is a two thirds vote. In this case, out of seven, that would be four point, some odd number. So it would actually require five votes.
I think at this point, we're ready to vote, so let's just go ahead and do it.
So with that, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote on the amended motion?
So this motion is to approve this item to include amendments to strike from the section membership, committee membership and term, the phrase unless the term is extended by approval of the city council, to amend the motion to include record meetings and provide the recordings to the public within 72 hours post-meeting. And also to include post a meeting notice 24 hours prior to the meeting to include on the water billing webpage.
Yes.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Thank you, guys. I think that's a good work. I think the recommendations you guys threw on the table there were good. So I think we worked through that and did a good job. Moving forward, item number six, Mr. Owens, would you put that on the table?
Consideration possible action resolution number R 2021 dash two, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second into staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is a contract man award consideration. This is part of our capital improvements program. It's for drainage improvements on a single road, Piper Road, that has been identified in need of this work. We had very competitive proposals. It's about 7% underneath the engineer's estimate, so good for that. And we've, as is described in there, we've tried to work and identify items of concern with the residents there and gone back and designed it a bit to accommodate some of those concerns. May cost a little bit more, but I think we'll have a project that'll be well received there. And so it's, given the scope of this relatively short turnaround, we should have this done in six months. That's an answer.
Okay, so we have the, thank you for the staff report into comments, questions from council?
My only question, Mayor, would just be the, the top three bidders, actually, the top two bidders were significantly higher. So it's not just one, it necessarily wouldn't be a question, but we feel confident the engineering documents are, are solid and that, I mean, getting, getting that much of a delta between, between the bid documents usually is a cause for concern on the bidder's end. Kind of a rhetorical question, but, you know, maybe it's worth a pre-construction meeting, just go through everything, make sure that we're avoiding any potential change orders in documents where there may be some items that need clarification.
Yeah, because, because bidders three through six are really tight.
Yes, sir. It was reviewed and we're comfortable with the numbers and, but we will have that conversation as well when we get things kicked off. But we're familiar with this contractor, they've done other work for us and we're confident in the project and the cost.
I trust you, Trent. I just think it was worth, worth noting just because of the value difference.
Yes, sir.
I looked at the bid numbers, I didn't see a bust in any of them. When he went down through there, something it may cost to come back and ask for, you know, something on it. But I didn't see any numbers that jumped out as any kind of a bust on any of the ten.
With respect to the values? I didn't see anything.
Anyway, any other comments, questions?
One, one comment on page one of the memo. The last sentence says, however, there will likely still be flooding of structures. I guess, can you give us a non-engineer description of, like, what is this going to solve and what type of rain events are we still going to have structural damage?
Yes, sir. I can give the non-engineer answer and if we want any details, we can bring Robert on the line. So this will meet our conveyance, our current conveyance standards of, for this type of roadway. I believe that's a three-year storm in, in the underground system as well as the remaining open ditches. So that, that'll alleviate a lot of the repetitive flooding we've had in this area in the smaller storms, the more frequent storms, that area does flood significantly in, in much smaller storms. Just based on the elevations of houses out there and things like that, when we see, you know, a Harvey or a hundred-year storm or things like that, that, you know, we're not with, with this scope or project and what we had to work with in the area, it would be very costly and really difficult to make that kind of improvement there. So this, this will help in the, in the more frequent storms, definitely. If we see another Harvey, I would not guarantee anything out there.
All right. Thank you.
Given, given the fact that the city chose them and Binkley Barfield recommended them and they've done previous projects for the city of Pearland and completed them in a timely manner and within budget, I'd say it's a go.
Deal. All right. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar? Member Kamkar?
Unmute.
There he goes.
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash two.
All right. Moving forward, Councilmember Carbone, I'm going to ask you to put number seven on the table since you brought this forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2021 dash 12, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's open session, right?
We have a motion and a second. And I'll go back to Councilmember Carbone or I guess why you brought this forward.
Yeah. With the most recent charter amendment, it took some of the, the detail and specificity out of, out of the charter as to what was being brought before council in terms of the budget supplemental. So this is just a resolution codifying that. Shouldn't be any additional work on staff. It's what they've always provided, but it's just getting it, getting it codified to make sure we're on the same page in terms of expectations going forward.
And to reiterate on this, you know, the items A through L, that, that straight, straight out of the charter, it was what we had under before. Of course, that was one that said under provisions of state law. And I think what we were looking for with that provision was more on the timing issues, not so much this. And so state law, you know, has sometimes less of what's required in the budget than what our folks wanted to see when they put that in the charter. So I think this is a good move to, to put this back into, not just back into the charter, but codify it back into what we are asking. And along these same lines, I believe this is being, at the same time, this will be put into the.
Financial policies?
Financial policy.
Just puts them in one place so they're all there.
Puts it all there. It's not in two different places or two different categories or two different, you know, messages. It's all in one category as well.
Member Carbone, just one question. Since this was pulled out of the charter and we're trying to amend the change of the charter and we had already commissioned the charter to meet within its, the limited scheduled time with two years after the last time that they met or actually presented findings, or do you wish to try and present this in some future date to be added, re-added to the charter? Are you comfortable with just the, the resolution?
No, I think the end goal is to get the teeth back in the charter. But this is a good stopgap between now and then.
So maybe we can have a subsequent discussion about adding this. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to staff to make sure, but maybe we, I think we limited the scope of the charter, the review committee that was going to meet within that two-year time period, maybe subsequent to this. We can add, have them add this back to that scope so that we can kind of fulfill your request. And then I have no objection to these additions.
I think it'd be a good cleanup item for that. Yeah. Good deal. Any other comments or questions? Seeing or hearing none. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash 12.
All right. Moving forward to item number eight, I'm going to swing this back to Councilmember Kamkar, your first meeting. I'm going to ask you to put this on the table. I think you brought this item forward.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just for discussion, council input and discussion regarding the local Pearland economic outlook for 2021. Mr. Mayor, my concerns around the economics are that we, we are not through the COVID days. I think we all know people have been damaged and hurt and I'm kind of curious of how our EDC and the city and the staff are planning through the rest of this year and into 2022 and just generally looking, what is our outlook? Obviously, sales tax is up. I think that's because people are ordering food and stuff off of Amazon. But I think we can drive through the city and see businesses that used to be open that aren't open anymore. And so I'd kind of like to get a little bit of input, not a massive amount, just to kind of inform our outlook as we start going into the budget cycle coming up here in February.
And with that, I'll, I'll kick it to city manager for input.
Sir, actually, I've got Matt Buchanan ready to just provide a few comments, but I'll just remind council that when you looked at the topics for the white paper discussions and early budget input in February, there is an economic outlook specifically in that. And so we're preparing that and you'll have that in another four weeks. But Matt's ready to at least touch on a little bit of what we're looking at right now.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll start with the, what I think the best forward-looking indicator of our economic outlook, and that is that this week we're meeting with a company that's looking to locate a new facility in our community and also with the local companies considering an expansion project. So it's a positive as we continue to have good activity of companies looking to invest in our city in 2021. We also continue to work on the implementation of our Pearland prosperity strategic plan at seven focus areas and want to thank Mayor Cole and Member Perez and Orlando for representing the city on that implementation committee. The goal is to plan to, you know, keep Pearland as a community of choice in the Houston area and continue our efforts to diversify our economic base for as relevant today as they were before the pandemic. The goals and the focus areas are a result of our community assessment that is a narrative of where the community has been and where it stands, where we're heading. That's a story of the community which communicates key themes and strategic issues from a detailed analysis that included extensive community input. And the assessment can be found on our PearlandProsperity.com website. But since we've adopted the plan in March, obviously, our local economy, like all communities, experienced serious effects of the pandemic and the changing consumer purchasing patterns that have resulted that Member Kamkar mentioned, you know, and our economic outlook would undoubtedly be much different if it were not for the federal stimulus that's been a major factor in lessing the impact of the effects of COVID-19 on our community. In the first round of the paycheck protection program, which I think we sent you a memo out about some time ago, we estimated that our businesses received over $110 million to maintain jobs in our community. And our residents received around $83 million in direct payments, and that does not count the, the payments that they're all receiving right now from the stimulus that just passed. Our unemployment rate peaked at 10.8% in April and this compared to probably about 14.8 in the region. And our most recent unemployment rate was 6.5% in November. So this translates in November to about 4,229 of our residents that are unemployed. You know, by comparison, in the pre-pandemic in January, in February, excuse me, of 2020, we were at a near historic low unemployment rate of 3%. That would be about 2,000 unemployed. So typically, we have probably two, usually around, maybe around 3,000 people in our community that are unemployed. From a total year-end development activity and sales tax perspective, you wouldn't know we're going through a pandemic or an economic downturn, downturn if you just looked at numbers. Building permit revenue has been overall relatively steady over the last three fiscal years in our community. Housing starts for the first three months of the fiscal year are off to the best start we've had that we've seen in the last four years for October, November and December. H A R data shows the average sale price of a house sold in Pearland rose from $287,000 in 2019 up to $294,000 in 2020. And then sales tax collections, after two months of decline at the start of the pandemic, have proven to be resilient with calendar year collections in 2020 actually higher than 2019. Because you'll remember, 2019 was just a little bit under where we were in 2018. Most recent November collections were up 7.7%. So we have, so we'll have to wait till next month to see what the holidays resulted for us. But most forecasts for 2021 are based on the importance of a successful rollout of the vaccine, you know, with high levels of inoculation by summer, allowing the economy to begin a road to full recovery this fall. And Mr. Pearson mentioned John McCarter's leading our efforts on the white paper for your early budget input session next month that will look at the general economic factors, you know, impacting revenue for the city, including, you know, evaluation of the development activity, sales tax, property tax values and how they'll be used to inform next year's budget. So with that, Mr. Pearson, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, the AR two, you know, there's a number of data sources that we look at continually and will continue to do that. The Greater Houston Partnership provides a number of good ones, and then there's some workforce materials. And we're working with the Houston Area Apartment Association to get some data from that perspective. So there's lots of elements to quote unquote, the economic health of the community. And so we do our best to keep our fingers on the pulse of all those. Nothing to add.
All right. Any questions or comments from, from council? We'll throw it out there for discussion. All right. It's really not an action item to, to vote on. Obviously, this was a good report, good, good fresh, and we look forward to more discussion on this as we move into February and early budget discussion. So with that, I'm going to move to, there are no, I guess that's item number eight. There's no mayor council issues for city council for discussion here. We need to move towards executive session. So with that, I'm going to call our open session to close at.
Councilmember Cole, if you could, just for the record, state the sections that we'll be meeting under for the exec session and then the time that will.
Yeah, the executive sessions under, we're going to be moving into executive session under the Texas Government Code, sections 551.071. We have three items that are under that same section that we'll be discussing. We'll come back into open session if there are any possible actions to vote on. With that, at 10:58, I'll call us into recess.
Just to clarify for any council members that are going to participate remotely.
Hi, my name is Jason Pecknold with Pearland Fire Department. Did you know that flash floods are the number one weather-related killer in the United States? Most of our flood fatalities occur when people try to drive through deadly water instead of playing it safe and avoiding that high water. Turn around, don't drown. It only takes two feet of water to float a 3,000-pound car. Even in relatively shallow water, tires can act as a flotation device by lifting vehicles and sending them downstream. Be aware that water uncovering roadways may hide washed-out bridges or gauged-out roadbeds. So if you're in a low-lying area when flooding occurs, get to higher ground as soon as you can. Never attempt to cross flooded roads or streams on foot. It could take as little as six inches of moving water to knock an adult off of his or her feet. Monitor weather and road conditions wherever you are traveling. For road conditions in Texas, visit drivetexas.org. The Pearland Fire Department can't stress enough to drivers to use extreme caution when driving in heavy rain and flooded areas. For more information, please visit pearlandtx.gov/fire.
During the month of July, we celebrate National Park and Recreation Month. It's a time when we recognize our staff for the amazing job they do, as well as a time to connect with our community through pop-up events and programs at our parks.
This year, things are different, and instead of focusing on what we do, we have an opportunity to focus on who we are. Creative, resourceful, diverse, compassionate, adaptable. These words and many others describe the individuals that make up Pearland Parks and Recreation.
Hurdles and roadblocks will rise unexpectedly at times, but the key to overcoming them is persistence and resilience. Using those traits, our team has come together stronger than ever to ensure that we can continue to show up and stand strong for the community in the best and safest ways we know how.
While we may not be able to keep our doors open in the current season, we still strive to create connections and opportunities to make Pearland a happy, healthy, and engaged community.
Through continued efforts to maintain engagement, such as mowing and park maintenance to keep green and natural spaces available, redesigning and developing our virtual programming, drive-through meal services at the NAP Activity Center, or camp-at-home activities, we continue to serve.
Because it's time like these, seeking out and highlighting the good, uplifting, and positive things is the most important. So this month, help us celebrate, because the spirit of National Park and Recreation Month remains strong, just like our commitment to our community.
Pearland is one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation, and that's for a lot of great reasons. Set in sunny Texas just south of Houston, Pearland is a very diverse and globally-connected community and has something for everyone. Houston is the fourth-largest city in the nation and affords Pearland easy access to world-class entertainment, easily accessible airports with connections to wherever you want to go, and whether you work in the world's largest medical center or in downtown Houston, living in Pearland puts you minutes away all week and miles away all weekend. Enjoying life in Pearland is easy because you can easily enjoy a lot of everything. From fitness classes to festivals, from playdates in the park to swim meets in a world-class natatorium, elbow room, and the community, stellar schools. With strong academic rankings, Pearland students are scholars. Home to one of the nation's best steakhouses, we are famous for barbecue and Mexican food, plus Chinese, Italian, sushi, Greek, Thai, burgers, Indian, and so much more. Amazing neighbors and lots of house-for-the-money in neighborhoods with many, many amenities. And you've probably heard of our champion Pearland Little Leaguers, sort of a big thing around here. Oh, and so is our football. There's oodles of shopping. What's more, when it comes to business, business is booming in Pearland, and that means careers, and lots of them. Pearland, only minutes from Houston and the beach, is the land of friendly neighbors, low crime, exciting careers, fun food and festivals, stellar education, and winning sports. Now you know, Pearland has a lot to love. Pearland, prepare to love it.
Well, the good news is, is that we've got the old screen down. That took a couple of days. We are now looking at a big cavernous theater with no screen, but it is, you know, kind of interesting to see behind the scenes. But we've got so much to do, but the good news is we're on track to open November 8th after our extreme renovation. I know you probably have seen the seats, but we've got all new seats and new flooring, and Super Power Dogs was so popular, we're going to bring that back. And of course, Great Barrier Reef to kind of round out our schedule. And so we're really excited. And actually, Monday night, the Veterans Night, we're actually going to show the They Shall Not Grow Old encore presentation with our Dirk Van Touren house. So yeah, we've got lots of plans for this theater. So come down, take a look at it, let me know if there's anything you want me to do or I haven't done. All right, talk to you soon. Joe. Craig?
Hey, everybody, it's Charlotte Rohe, the VP of Film Programming for the Worthing Giant Screen Theater. What's going on?
You know, I'm in here working.
I know, it's awesome. I figured I'd get here early. November 8th is the opening day for the GST, but I figured I'd get a seat.
Well, you know, you're about a week early.
Yeah, yeah, very punctual.
Are you, like, comfortable in your seat?
I love them. They move back and forth, I got cup holders, they're comfy, like, I mean, like, I like
And they're a little wider.
They're a little bit wider, and you're soaked into the chair, just like it's a chair at home.
And you're rocking a little bit?
Rocking a little, yep, yep.
Well, I hate to tell you this, but it's probably pretty obvious to you that we have no screen up right now. We've taken down the old screen.
You know, you're right.
So it's kind of hard to show you a movie.
I didn't know if it was one of those weird 3D things where it was, that's... There's not a screen there.
Yeah, no. Well, since you've come so early, Craig, and I like you, and primarily, because there's no screen to show you a movie, how about I give you a behind-the-scenes tour of this big, bad theater?
You mean for...
Just you.
And us, the people?
Yeah, for the people.
I'm just saying Spinal Tap would be a good idea.
You know, the thing is, I know it's a classic film, Spinal Tap, and it's about, you know, it's got Stonehenge in it, which of course we have, you know, on exhibition here, but we're talking about the theater right now. Are you dazzled by the carpet? Is that, it's kind of rainbow, isn't it?
This is, this is beautiful. This is beautiful.
Isn't it though? Yeah.
It's colorful and it...
It's meant to make you feel emotionally, colorfully happy.
So we got new carpet in here now?
New carpet. We're going along with the new seats.
We're now on the new GST stage that's been installed, and it's got the fancy carpet on it, and this is going to be perfect for when we have special lectures and presentations.
Will we be dancing?
Cool scientific things. I'm just the one dancing right now. And it's just going to be really fun, right? I mean, this is like a good thing because the screen's going to be there eventually, and it's going to be just a really great meeting place.
Yeah, we wanted to kind of give an opportunity to have multi-lectures, do some fun things that we haven't been able to do because we haven't had an area big enough. So, you know, we might be doing some cool lectures next year that might have some controversial subjects and have a panel discussion about something. What do you think?
I like that.
Yeah.
Controversial fun. Now, right now, we are standing roughly where the new giant screen will be on November 8th. How special is this new screen going to be?
Well, it's going to be so special in that it can take both a digital projection, which we have now, and it will be ready for laser projection, which we will show, we will put in next year. So it's going to be dynamic in that it is going to be picture-perfect, clear, dust-free, propane-hobby-free, but it literally will be 75 feet wide. Continuing tradition of giant screen, that's what everybody enjoys about this theater.
So this is the first major renovation of this screen in 30 years?
Yeah, we're literally taking steps up a theater that was built in 1989 to much the delight of the Houstonians, 1989. So we are literally reinventing what that experience was like by having a whole new fresh look. So we literally have renovated this entire place. As you can see, we've still got some work to do, but the great thing is, November 8th, it'll all be done.
So when this thing opened in September of 1989, it was historic because it was the first IMAX screen in Houston.
Exactly.
And it was a very special thing, it was a very star-studded event here.
It was, it was one of, it was the very first in Houston, and the president of the museum at the time, Pruitt Latimer, he had made sure that we wanted the flat-screen version of IMAX. There's a dome version, but we wanted the flat screen, and we wanted to be the first in Houston. And it was such an enormous success. Literally, the success of the theater over the years helped build the rest of this museum. You know, it was a, what we in the business call a cash cow, because there were so many people wowed by the big screen. And, you know, stadium seating, that was from the IMAX theaters. That predated what you see at the local multiplex. So that sort of inspired that, so we had it first.
And a lot of other museums in the country started doing the same thing.
Building museums, and they started building theaters. And the theaters were literally a component of education that nobody had had before, you know, sort of education came to life.
Now, I've been rooting around in here, and I found this. Tell the viewers at home what exactly this was.
Wow, it's this old thing called film. These were film canisters, and so in the days of the IMAX theater, the projectionists would receive about 30 of those that they would literally have to piece together, and they used to do it up in this room, to what they call "build the print." And so the print would be put together by reels of film.
So this baby here is the projector that we use currently?
Yes. It's our digital projector that we went from film that we just talked about, and we went in 2012 and upgraded to digital, which everybody kind of knows about these days, but that was five years ago. So this particular projector is actually quite new in the world of electronics, but it is, of course, you can see there's two of them, and that, of course, is for the 3D projection. And currently, that's what we are running, but this is going to change next year. We are going to upgrade once again to digital laser. We're going to have laser illumination versus xenon, which is bulbs, and so lamps. We don't have to have lamps anymore beginning next year.
So the GST is always, it's always evolving.
We're trying to keep up with technology, and fortunately, we have the Worthing Foundation that is our namesake, and they have been so good about helping us keep up to date on the latest technology, and laser is the latest technology.
Now, way back in the day, this room used to be packed with film equipment.
Yes, when we first were in an IMAX theater, we had one big, huge projector. When we went 3D in 2007, we had two IMAX projectors. So therefore, the film literally ran all across the room. You could not walk in here, and you could not get from one side to the other, other than crawling underneath the film. That's how tight it was, and in fact, it was almost too tight. We almost didn't fit the 3D projector in here. We have one of the smaller booths in the industry, but it was, IMAX managed to do it, and but it was literally, film was filled up this entire room. And that area over there where we used to actually put films together, you know, splice in in the old-fashioned one. So it's, so as you can see now, we have these digital, how much more room we have. And it, and it changed, really, the digital changed the lives of distributors, which was what my original career was here, where, you know, we don't have 400 pounds of print to ship around. Films can come in a digital file and almost like the size of a lunchbox. And so it just has made a huge difference. So now we could almost have a little dance club in here if we wanted to.
It was a teenage wedding, and the old folks wished him well.
I have an idea. Wit and Tarantino movie marathon inside the Worthing Giant Screen Theater.
Oh, let me think. No, too violent.
So November 8th is the grand reopening of the Worthing Giant Screen Theater here at the Houston Museum of Natural Science.
It is, but you're going to need these. We're still 3D.
Future's so bright, I have to wear 3D shades. November 8th.
Be there.
For more information about the Worthing Giant Screen Theater and to see what's playing, go to hms.org/giantscreentheater.
Pearland has been recognized as a 2019 top workplace in the Houston area. Millions of employees at thousands of organizations took the Top Workplaces Survey, and Pearland stood out. Some of America's most recognizable brands are among the list, and the city of Pearland is proud to stand among them. Creating a top workplace is about more than offering great benefits, it's about organizational health. The city of Pearland is among this list because our employees believe in the collective vision, they rise up to the challenges we face, they see the value of our work, and know how it makes a difference in our community. Let's hear what some of our employees have to say.
I feel proud to be associated with the city of Pearland. What I love is to get involved in the work that benefits the society directly.
I put my all into it. I make sure that, you know, what I do is my signature is on that work, and I want the people to be able to enjoy the parks and the public, and also for people who come to the city of Pearland, they can see the work that we do, and they know that not only we care about our city and the natural means and looks of it, but also every other department and employee inside the city as well.
Because I do what I do and build things for us, for the city, makes it a better place overall.
The whole purpose in my job now is to enhance the life of another individual.
To learn about the city of Pearland and how you can join our award-winning team, visit pearlandtx.gov/careers.
The Melvin NAP Activity Center is a recreation facility for active adults 50 years of age and older. The center is operated by Pearland Parks and Recreation and offers a variety of programs, activities, trips, and classes that are either low-cost or absolutely free. Membership to the center is $25 for Pearland residents and just $50 a year for non-residents. The facility includes a fitness room complete with treadmills, stationary bikes, and a weightlifting machine. There's also plenty of field trip opportunities to visit the sights and sounds of Pearland and its surroundings. Visit pearlandtx.gov/napcenter for more details.
If you haven't already discovered the benefits offered by Pearland Parks and Recreation, now is your chance. Pearland Parks and Recreation, where else can you find the community events, recreation trails, and green space that meet your needs? Whether it's educating children and adults, or improving your health, providing safe places to play, or creating memories or meeting friends and helping the environment, Pearland Parks and Recreation connects the community through people, parks, and programs.
We want to encourage you to get up, get out, and get active with Pearland Parks and Recreation, offering a wide variety of activities that promote your physical, mental, and emotional health and wellness. There's no better place to be. Join us to learn a new skill, build a stronger family, improve your health, improve your self-esteem, and improve your overall quality of life.
Connect with your community and learn. Play and grow with Pearland Parks and Recreation. Athletics and sports programs are always a hot topic, and Pearland Parks and Recreation offers a wide variety of leagues for both adults and youth. Choose from basketball, football, softball, volleyball, and then some. No matter what your interests are or your stage in life, chances are we have the perfect activity for you.
Pearland Parks and Recreation delivers fun and fitness for families.
Make sure to mark your calendar because Pearland Parks and Recreation has a full year of events and activities to choose from. Pearland Parks and Recreation, a place to learn, play, and grow.
Welcome to the historical city of Pearland, Texas. As the fastest-growing city in the Houston region, Pearland has everything you're looking for in a community: affordable housing, outstanding schools, safe neighborhoods, and a superb quality of life. Millions of square feet of retail, office, and residential construction has been completed in the past 10 years, moving Pearland on its way to becoming the next major employment hub in the Houston region. Pearland was also recently ranked the fifth-safest city in Texas, has an incredible cost of living, 23 school campuses with an enrollment of over 20,000 students, and shopping and dining that rivals greater-populated areas. Pearland is rapidly becoming a foodie destination hotspot. The city of Pearland will continue its path of an ever-growing and evolving city that encompasses big-city amenities into the historical shell that it began from. This place matters. I got in a pool of sugars and... Shocking, just rode all the time, just had a few drinks, just can't be happening.
Are we clear?
Clear. We just buzzed. Just buzzed? You didn't tell us that, sir. You're right, this isn't happening. You'll be fine.
He'll be fine.
Eh, I feel good.
Really?
No, not really.
Buzz driving. Maybe we should stop acting like it's no good deal.
Well, I am Lucia Briggs. I'm the children's librarian here at the Pearland West Side Library. And the mayor was our special guest today.
Y'all doing okay this morning?
He came and read stories. It was a butterfly theme, so he read some butterfly stories. And the kids loved it, the families loved it. It was really great to be able to see the mayor come down to this side of town. It's a great way to interact with the community and to meet members of the city.
It's wonderful to see all of you bring your children to the library. You start out in a library, you wind up in a college, and you wind up in a profession where people say, wow, that's a special person. So, thank you for bringing all of your children here and being a part of it too. And all the kids and all the people in the community gathered around and welcomed the butterflies to their community. And sure enough, that's what the town turned out to be. Isn't that pretty? Look at that. Both these guys know how to talk. I didn't know that mice knew how to talk, did you? Did you know that? You did? Good. Can you see it from there? Good. Got x-ray eyes, huh? That's wonderful. I think that's great. You can see things your parents couldn't see, huh? Okay. And happiness is more important thing of all, Zo said. And you've got to let me share with you why it is so important.
I had another time and that one's right there.
Now, that's what you call happiness. That's called happiness. Oh, happiness is feeling a snowflake melting on my tongue and the end of my nose. Look at that. Look at that guy. And he went on to share about happiness. Happiness is blowing the seeds of a dandelion away. Have you ever blown a seed of a dandelion away? Those are flowers, aren't they? Sitting on grass, blowing a dandelion and watching it float away. That is really happiness, isn't it? It's, it's something that makes you feel good. And the world looks much better too. But most of all, she was going to miss the butterflies. And butterflies are something very special for her. What's she doing there? The next morning, the girl couldn't wait to eat the butterflies. She set off into a place with a great big plate of cookies in her hand. I didn't know butterflies ate cookies, did you? And for a while, it was very smart to make a small first impression as we all try to do in our life. But when she opened the gate to the butterfly park, finally she saw one. It's a great deal of happiness on my part to be able to be here and visit you guys and all of the adults that are in the audience today. I think you're very special. We have a wonderful city. And a part of our, part of our objective in life is to be happy. Now, happiness doesn't mean that there aren't bad things that happen or difficulties. But as long as you're happy, as long as you guys are happy, the world will be a better, better place. And you will always be a better, find a better place in the world yourself.
I think probably some of the best conversations I've had with citizens has just been out and about. You're in duty. You're just out and about and you just happen to stop off at a, at Buc-Ee's or eating at Pearland Coffee Roasters and...
Exactly.
Just having a cup of coffee. People come up to you and just want to talk. And, and police, we are part of the community also.
We are part of the community. Most of the, most of the officers that work in our department live right here in Pearland. So I think it's very important when you're, when you're invested in your community and, and you take pride in your community, I think it makes a big difference when you're working every day.
We have a lot of police on the department right now, but we're looking to expand that even right now.
Exactly. We got eight, eight people in the police academy. We have three people that are in, about to start training along with them. And we have two are in training with, right now. So we're gonna have 15 people training at the same time. So that'd be 15 new officers on the street for 2017.
Wow. But they're not all going to patrol, are they? We're looking to expand.
Right. No, they're not all gonna go to patrol. A vast majority will. We're gonna expand our CID a little bit. We're gonna definitely put some in community services. And just, you know, with more people patrolled, you have to expand other parts of your department also.
And with all those people, I think that's gonna give us an opportunity to really start making some more intelligent deployments. We have a new program that we've just started, DDAC, Data-Driven Approach to Crime and Traffic Safety.
Exactly. Yeah, we're gonna identify. We have a new crime analyst that came on board last year. He's given us a lot of good information about where most of our crime is occurring. We're gonna develop those hotspots and make sure the DDAC units are out there.
In these DDAC zones where we'll see, where we're seeing a lot of incidents like crashes or criminal incidents, once we start deploying them out there, they're gonna be intelligently deployed. We're gonna have our crime analysts letting us know what, when the crimes are happening. If it's between, we know that most offenses are occurring between like one and four. It makes sense to send the officers there between one and four because that's when the crimes are happening. So when they're there, when the incidents are happening, just being seen in the area, maybe they can discourage these clerks from coming into town.
Pearland has been recognized as a 2019 top workplace in the Houston area. Millions of employees at thousands of organizations took the top workplaces survey and Pearland stood out. Some of America's most recognizable brands are among the list and the city of Pearland is proud to stand among them. Creating a top workplace is about more than offering great benefits. It's about organizational health. The city of Pearland is among this list because our employees believe in the collective vision. They rise up to the challenges we face. They see the value of our work and know how it makes a difference in our community. Let's hear what some of our employees have to say.
I feel proud to be associated with the city of Pearland. What I love is to get involved in the work that benefits the society directly.
I put my all into it. I make sure that, you know, what I do is, is my signature is on that work. And I want the people to be able to enjoy the parks and, and the public. And also for people who come to the city of Pearland, they can see the work that we do. And they know that not only we care about our city and the natural means and looks of it, but also every other department and employee inside the city as well.
Because I do what I do and build things for us, for the city, makes it a better place overall.
The whole purpose in my job now is to enhance the life of another individual.
To learn about the city of Pearland and how you can join our award-winning team, visit pearlandtx.gov/careers.
The Melvin Knapp Activity Center is a recreation facility for active adults 50 years of age and older. The center is operated by Pearland Parks and Recreation and offers a variety of programs, activities, trips, and classes that are either low cost or absolutely free. Membership to the center is $25 for Pearland residents and just $50 a year for non-residents. The facility includes a fitness room complete with treadmills, stationary bikes, and a weightlifting machine. There's also plenty of field trip opportunities to visit the sights and sounds of Pearland and its surroundings. Visit pearlandtx.gov/knappcenter for more details.
If you haven't already discovered the benefits offered by Pearland Parks and Recreation, now is your chance. Pearland Parks and Recreation. Where else can you find the community events, recreation trails, and green space that meet your needs? Whether it's educating children and adults, or improving your health, providing safe places to play, or creating memories or meeting friends and helping the environment, Pearland Parks and Recreation connects the community through people, parks, and programs.
We want to encourage you to get up, get out, and get active with Pearland Parks and Recreation. Offering a wide variety of activities that promote your physical, mental, and emotional health and wellness, there's no better place to be. Join us to learn a new skill, build a stronger family, improve your health, improve your self-esteem, and improve your overall quality of life.
Connect with your community and learn. Play and grow with Pearland Parks and Recreation. Athletics and sports programs are always a hot topic. And Pearland Parks and Recreation offers a wide variety of leagues for both adults and youth. Choose from basketball, football, softball, volleyball, and then some. No matter what your interests are or your stage in life, chances are, we have the perfect activity for you.
Pearland Parks and Recreation delivers fun and fitness for families.
Make sure to mark your calendar because Pearland Parks and Recreation has a full year of events and activities to choose from. Pearland Parks and Recreation. A place to learn, play, and grow.
Welcome to the historical city of Pearland, Texas. As the fastest-growing city in the Houston region, Pearland has everything you're looking for in a community. Affordable housing, outstanding schools, safe neighborhoods, and a superb quality of life. Millions of square feet of retail, office, and residential construction has been completed in the past 10 years, moving Pearland on its way to becoming the next major employment hub in the Houston region. Pearland was also recently ranked the fifth safest city in Texas, has an incredible cost of living. Twenty-three school campuses with an enrollment of over 20,000 students and shopping and dining that rivals greater populated areas. Pearland is rapidly becoming a foodie destination hotspot. The city of Pearland will continue its path of an ever-growing and evolving city that encompasses big city amenities into the historical shell that it began from. This place matters.
When it comes to business, Pearland is serious. As one of the fastest-growing cities in the Houston region, we are pro-business and business, as they say, is booming. Whether you're in biotech, healthcare, energy, manufacturing, or business services, you'll network well with other large and small companies who have made Pearland a part of their business plan. Everything you need to grow your company is here in Pearland. For starters, an educated workforce with affordable homes, stellar schools, master-planned neighborhoods, and a wonderful lifestyle. So attracting quality employees is easier than ever. Next, we offer millions of square feet of retail and office space, all completed in the last decade alone. We have in Pearland what every business needs to succeed: human capital. And while Pearland lends easy access to highly educated talent, it also provides easy access to goods and resources via air, sea, rail, and highways. The Burlington Northern Santa Fe Rail Line runs north to south in our community. The Port of Houston, ranked number one in U.S. export tonnage, is only 14 miles away. And Port of Galveston and Port of Freeport are just down the road. Also, major interstates thread out into the nation and Highway 288 and Beltway 8 intersect conveniently and efficiently through the Pearland infrastructure. And there are two international airports in the region, including Hobby Airport only four miles away. Want more? Pearland offers amenitized, buildable sites, quality infrastructure, and competitive incentives. And our expeditious permitting process makes for an easy startup for businesses of all sizes. And we're only minutes away from downtown Houston and the world's largest medical center. Having created thousands of jobs in the last two years, Pearland has a low unemployment rate and an impressive median household income. That's why Pearland is poised to be the next major employment center in the Houston region. You're going to love the way Pearland does business and business is booming. Pearland, prepare to love it.
Hey folks, Craig Levati here with the Houston Museum of Natural Science. I am inside the Mauryan Hall of Palaeontology. And today, I'm going to learn how Associate Curator David Temple cleans dinosaurs. Now, I never thought I would be up close and personal with Stan, one of our most popular T-Rexes here. And so you actually need to get really up close and personal with him to clean him.
I get up close and personal with all of our mounts in here about three times a year.
Now, it gets dirty really quick. Is, are Houstonians dirty? What's the deal here?
Okay, that's gonna be loaded and that's gonna be a weird thing to say. Filthy Houstonians, filthy, filthy.
But you have a big hall like this, there's a lot of dust and dander.
There is, there is. So we probably have 3 million people a year come through here. And you don't really think about people this way, but people are shedding.
So when people come in here, you know, and they're, they're, you know, in big groups and they're, you know, in awe of some of these creatures here, they're actually shedding and that means you need to eventually clean these guys.
They are. So what you may wonder about dust. So this is what it is. So if we look at him, and he hasn't been cleaned in a while...
Aw, you're petting him.
I'm petting him, but you can see right there...
Yeah, okay.
A little bit of dust.
Okay.
So what we have to do is we have to do that for all amounts. We have to clean and dust them.
Don't try this at home. Do not try to touch Stan.
No, you shouldn't try to touch any of the mounts.
Any of our fossils here in the...
Don't touch any of the mounts. So when people come in here and they shed, if they shed like a lizard, it'd be great because then we just need a push groom. Because if you've ever seen a lizard or snake or whatever, it's really neat, really, really easy, just big chunks. People, it's fine, fine particles of dust.
And that's all in the air here.
It's all in the air here. And then the other component of dust is, a lot of people like blue jeans, so the most, the two most common components of dust are blue jean fibers and human skin. Actually, human skin is the, is the most. So once we dislodge the dust, then I've got other dust collectors that are sort of...
To suck it up. So it doesn't go in somewhere else.
Right. So a lot of it will be taken up through the HVAC system here and get deposited on the museum's air-conditioned filters, which they have to change those, just like you change yours at home. Only you may have to do one every six months or three months and we have to do hundreds.
Because we have millions of people coming here.
Right, we have to do a lot more. So, but we also have, one of the crews, one of their jobs is they follow me around in this thing and they have these big sort of HEPA dust vacuum systems that are modified. So as I, as I hit this with compressed air, the dust comes flying off. Some of it, of course, gets sucked up by the AC. Some of it sadly probably gets redeposited somewhere else. But then a lot of it also gets sucked up in the other dust collection. So if we look at Stan, one of the ways, of course, you can do it is we try not to use dust cloths. Because dust cloths have a nap to them and they will trap the snag on things. Now, things like casts, they're pretty sturdy. It's really not gonna be a big problem. But on original fossils, it can be a huge problem. But for instance, with these, you just...
Just a few... Oh, I already see dust coming off of them.
Yeah. There'll be a little bit of dust on it. And then, of course, you just have to stabilize it and brush it.
So I stabilize it, then brush it?
Yeah.
Okay. So like, kinda like this?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, you're looking great, Stan. You look great. You're ready for your... Do you ever talk to him while you're doing this?
Not that I'm willing to admit on camera.
All right. I have my really cool, extra-special booties on so I can get in here with David. David is wearing his, uh, those are your dinosaur cleaning socks.
Yeah, they have dinosaurs on them too. So when you get in, in here, of course, we don't want to scuff or mar the platforms. So you either, we either wear booties or, in my case, I'm old-school. I wear socks. Probably should be wearing booties, but you need to get up here in something that's not gonna mar the surface.
To reiterate, obviously, don't do this. Do not stand on these platforms. David will notice. The other docents here will notice. The discovery guides will notice. Look at everything, you know, from a safe distance that we've given you here, obviously. Don't, don't try to disturb the ancient fossils if you can, because it makes this guy mad.
It does make me very mad. And this fills me with rage because this is my girlfriend.
Okay, this is Jurassic Mom.
I don't get out a lot.
Okay, what is, what is Jurassic Mom? Let's go ahead and get out here.
Jurassic Mom is a Stenopteridius and it's one of, I think, really the treasures of our collection here. It's one of my favorites. And when you come through this gallery, this is part of the Jurassic. So we've got Oldsmot and early Jurassic. We have some Solenhoff and late Jurassic. All of these fossils are original fossils. So what we've done here, it's sort of the concept behind the hall, is to take fossils, so natural history specimens, and put them in a fine art setting, which is why you can approach them very closely. When you look at all of the murals in our hall, all the murals reflect what the fossils are doing, except for Jurassic Mom. She's the only one where we broke that rule. And the reason is because her story is very sad. So Jurassic Mom, and one of the reasons you always say, well, why do you call her Mom? Well, she is, and she has a lot of unborn ichthyosaurs. We actually do have a couple fossils here where the moment of death is preserved. And that's kind of rare and Jurassic Mom, you know, qualifies.
Now, how do you clean Jurassic Mom?
Jurassic Mom is, it's so easy to give you an answer to this because all you do is very carefully.
Okay.
So, and of course, what that requires is I allow people to come up on the platform here. And usually, again, I either use my prep volunteers, some staff. Usually, to be honest, Jurassic Mom, I do it myself.
Got it.
So what we use, and these are great, we use them in the... So, what we use, and these are great, we use them in the field, too, very soft brushes.
These are makeup brushes, folks.
Usually makeup brushes.
These are makeup brushes.
Makeup brushes are very useful in the field, and they're very useful in museum work in general, and for doing these, it's very handy. And this, the very top, sometimes I'll use a more coarse brush, because A, you're not on the surface of the fossil, and a lot of the dust actually really does settle in here. And then, of course, once you're done cleaning them, we'll have to come by and we'll have somebody either vacuum or sweep the platform.
The dander that comes off us.
The dander that comes down.
The dander that comes off the people that are cleaning.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Don't touch the fossils.
Don't touch the fossils. I've seen kids kind of like, you know, want to go... Don't do that.
Yeah, most people are pretty good. You go to see a fine arts museum, like, you know, if the painting is there, the Degas or the Renoir or whatever, people just know you don't go up and you don't touch the Degas. You just don't do that. You don't do this.
Piece of art, folks. Don't touch me.
Yeah, he is a piece of art. Actually, you are a living art. You're totally art.
Maybe one day I'll be in a hall just like this.
So, yeah, exactly.
I have to say, the metrodons are one of my favorite creatures that we have here in the Mauryan Hall of Paleontology. They came before dinosaurs, they were ugly, they were kind of pump rock-looking.
I feel the same way. Ever since I was a small child, I've really been drawn to the metrodons, and I had forgotten that. And then when we started the museum field dig, ended up we're digging the metrodons. And we started that simply because all we had of the metrodon, which is a very important animal, all we had was a picture. So, we wanted to have some other representations of that, and of course, you do find them in Texas, so it's a good Texas thing.
This one gets especially dirty, I've noticed, because it's so low to the ground, obviously.
Yeah.
And it looks like a toy.
Yeah.
So, kids are frequently trying to, you know, tap the tail, they're trying to touch something on this.
They are.
You have to clean this one a lot.
We do. And this one, this one, because it's a model and...
11:42, we're going to reconvene back into open session, so we're moving to item number 10, and that is, and we have three items underneath that, one, two, and three, and that's considered as possible action regarding pending or potential litigation associated with right-of-way acquisition.
Yes, Mayor, I'd recommend a motion authorizing staff to proceed with the settlement of litigation associated with the right-of-way acquisition, specifically associated with McCard Road right-of-way, as discussed in executive session.
So moved. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. No other discussion. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote on that?
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez? Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
All right, moving on to item number two, consideration of possible action regarding pending or potential litigation associated with cable franchise fees.
Yes, Mayor, I'd recommend a motion of the City Council authorizing staff to proceed with the resolution of a settlement on litigation associated with cable franchise fees, as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
And item number three on drainage improvements, we've taken no action. Under that, we'll move to other business, number 11. There is none. And number 12, adjournment. Call this meeting adjourned at 11:44 PM.
Good night, everyone.